Good evening. It's 5:30 on the 27th of June 2023. We have a full diocese here. City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, and realign the regular session or call to executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. At this point in time, the city council is going to go into executive session. It is 5:31. Good evening. It's 6:30, June 27, 2023. Thank you, ma'am. I'm calling this meeting of the Bastrop City Council to order. We are very pleased to have two of our employees, Paula Drake and Christina Davis, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Am I right there? Help me out.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. There's been a change in plan. There was an emergency, and so we have Christina Davis's children during the pledge. So we have two students. Their names are Madison and Jayden Davis.
Y'all come on up. We appreciate y'all being here. I'm sorry. I'm sorry didn't get a chance to come have a visit with y'all, but thank y'all so much for doing this. If y'all will all rise. Here's the flag right here, ladies.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Let's give these young ladies a round of applause. Y'all need to get pictures. Thank you so much, ladies. And now for our invocation. We have one of our police chaplains, Hardy Overton, is going to bring us the invocation. Thank you, sir.
Father God, we come before you right now, and we give you all the honor and all the glory. We just want to ask you, Father, to come and take control over this meeting today, O mighty God. We want to ask you, Father, to watch over this, the mayor and the city council, the city officials, our county, and our state and our nation, O mighty God. Holy Spirit, we just want to ask you to have your way in, each and every one of us making the connections, so you can get all the honor and glory. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Y'all may be seated. And I would appreciate y'all's indulgence as I try to get all this stuff underneath me. I'll get it to where it'll be a smooth operating machine here shortly. And counsel, bear with me. I'll keep my head on the swivel as much as I can, reading all the buttons and dials to make sure I call on y'all at appropriate time. We are going to change the agenda up a little bit. We're going to go to item 12C. I'm sorry. I take it back. 12, yes, 12C. 12C, item 12C, is Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R2023-96 and Resolution Number R2023-99 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, removing Dee Moore and C. Kaler from the Planning and Zoning Commission. There's more discussion that needs to be had with our attorney relative to that. So, city council is going to adjourn into executive session at this point in time. Counsel is back from executive session. We will take up item 12C once again. Yes. And I will read it again in case people have forgotten. Consider action to approve resolutions Number R-2023-96 and Resolution Number R2023-99 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, removing Dee Moore and C. Kaler from the Planning and Zoning Commission. This item was submitted by Mayor Protem Kirkland and Councilmember Plunkett. Floor is yours, gentlemen. No, we'll let y'all speak on it. We'll do the comments.
So, this item was filed because, I believe, along with Councilmember Plunkett, that we have goals before us specifically to fix our building codes and that we need to do these repairs to our building codes within a short amount of time. I've said that we should complete them in under a year. We need to move on from this topic and move on to other obstacles and things that are facing our city. And that I don't believe that we can accomplish that goal with the current leadership in planning and zoning. That I believe with all of my heart that that goal will not be achieved because the leadership of planning and zoning does not agree with it. And that goal was stated as campaign promises by individuals that were elected by vast majorities to this body and that there is a need to listen to the people, to the electorate, and to deliver on those promises. And as we work through these processes, it has been clear that it that we are having difficulty getting there. And so, I would like to reset the table and try again and again with the goal of fixing our development issues in under a year and then moving on to other topics. So, that's the introduction for the item.
Thank you, sir. We have several public comments have been received relative to this item.
Mayor, you need a motion and a second to open it for dialogue. You need a motion on the floor and a second to open the item.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Do I have a motion?
Certainly. So, we're committed to the future of Bastrop. We're committed to fixing the development process in Bastrop. We're committed to the citizen volunteers that serve our boards and commissions. We appreciate the service of Ms. Kaler. We appreciate the service of Ms. Moore. I find them to be very capable and competent individuals, and we're choosing to head in a different direction in order to meet our goals. And so, I motion that we approve Resolutions R2023-96 and R2023-99.
Have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Second. I have a second. Now, we'll move to citizens' comments relative to this agenda item. We have Carrie Fossler, who wishes to speak on this item. Ms. Fossler, if you will approach the podium, provide your name and address. You have, you will have three minutes.
My name is Carrie Fossler. I live at 1903 Main Street, Bastrop, Texas, 78602. Welcome to your first meeting, Mayor, Council. The last time there was a resolution to remove a Planning and Zoning Commissioner was on January 24. Out of the 38-minute discussion, there was one theme that kept resurfacing as the most important, the city manager's request for us to trust the process. She also said, which was my favorite line of the evening because it's also my favorite line of my life, "It's important for us to be able to do things in a format that gives the democratic process a place to work." And you know what? Everyone oriented around that line that night because it's true. Fast forward to today, there's two resolutions to remove another two commissioners. And so, I speak the same line tonight because it's as true tonight as it was six months ago and as it will be six months from now. It's important for us to be able to do things in a format that gives the democratic process a place to work. I would be up here speaking for the process even if I did not know the two individuals as I do. And I would also be up here speaking for the process if I did not agree with the two people on the resolutions this evening. This is about the process. This agenda item is a flex. It's an unwarranted flex. You've come armed with machetes, and when all that's needed is a breath. This moment is new. No matter what pressures you have faced privately and publicly in the past few weeks, this moment is new. No matter if you've been quietly agreeing to intervene in the board composition because of the tremendous pressure to get a particular result quickly, this moment is new. No matter if you've been keen to show your loyalty at all costs, I ask you to look at the costs. This moment is new. This moment is a new opportunity to orient around the truth that it is indeed important for us to be able to do things in a format that gives the democratic process a place to work. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next scheduled to speak is Steve Chamberlain. If you'll approach the podium and give us your name and address. You'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilperson. My name is Steve Chamberlain. My address is 230 Oak Forest Drive, Cedar Creek, Texas, 78612. Although I am not a citizen of Bastrop, I live out right near 812 on 21, and everything I do is done through Bastrop. Other than a couple of gas stations and bars, maybe, everything else, I've got to come into Bastrop. So, what you do here affects my life just as much as it does all the citizens of Bastrop. You've got a resolution here, the two resolutions, and it starts out with the "Whereas the City Planning and Zoning Council serves the city at will." Here to go, the citizens. You are here to serve the citizens of the community. I don't think anybody has a question about the second one of, "You have the right to do this." Yes, you do have the right to do this. We're not questioning that. But it should be done for a purpose. There was no purpose anywhere in the documentation of why. Anything they've done wrong, and the first time we heard that was tonight with Mayor Protem Kirkland. And of course, the last one, the city council appreciates Debbie Moore's and Carrie Kaler's service on the Planning and Zoning Commission and thanks them for their public service by kicking them to the curb. The Mayor Protem Kirkland mentioned a minute ago about the promises made, where after satisfying the promises made of doing this within a year, nothing was ever mentioned about doing it right. You can't set a date and then, "Oh, that date's coming up, so no matter what it is, do it." At least both Ms. Kaler and Ms. Moore are doing the right thing for Bastrop. So, they should not be terminated for doing the right thing, for doing what's best for the citizens of Bastrop and the community. So, as legislative liaison for the Bastrop County Democrat Party, I oppose these resolutions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chamberlain. Next, we have Dora Epstein Jones. Welcome. Provide your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I am Dr. Dora Epstein Jones, 302 Cedar in Bastrop, 78602. Want to thank the mayor and the council for hearing me today. I am a professor and former chair of architecture at Texas Tech University. I possess a doctorate in architecture and a master's in urban planning from UCLA. I have 10 to 20 years' experience working with the Board of Supervisors in Los Angeles, California, and I have three years as an administrative aide to Congressman Ronald V. Dulham's in Oakland, California. This resume is only because to tell you I'm coming to you with some experience. In my experience, I have rarely encountered a city volunteer or a commissioner with as much planning and zoning knowledge as Ms. Kaler has. I was shocked to learn that urban planning was not her degree field and that this position was a volunteer activity for her. Indeed, she not only knows and understands city codes and zoning, she can discuss these matters with an insight and foresight that I would commonly associate with a colleague or a seasoned political professional. I want to believe that our leaders lead with expertise. I am reassured that Ms. Kaler represents me, us, on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I am alarmed at her summary removal. I am even more alarmed to learn that this summary removal is in the name of expediency for development. I believe that we should all seek to retain volunteers that possess knowledge in the areas that they serve. I hope that we will reward their service, and I hope that we will consider the deep need for commission members to not only comprehend, but actively be intelligently aware and empowered to face the base manipulations that we'll surely encounter as Austin and Elon encroach ever closer and we continue to feel the regional pressures of development in this city and county. With about four vacant seats across the volunteer commissions of Bastrop, I cannot fathom why one with the knowledge, passion, and dedication of Ms. Kaler would be dismissed so readily and in a manner unusual or atypical or even questionable as to best practices. I urge counsel to strike this resolution, and I am available to the City of Bastrop for further advice on best practices and expediency on development and planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Epstein Jones. This is a business meeting. It's not a sports contest. Just withhold your applause, your boos, and whatever else you may practice at sports complex. Thank you. The next one to speak, that I have to speak, is Deanne Kaler. If you'll approach the podium, provide your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Deanne Kaler, 16513 Decker Creek Drive, Maynor, Texas, right up the road here. My husband and I, we are Carrie's parents, have been shopping, dining, and enjoying local music here for years and almost exclusively since Carrie and her husband Phil bought a home three years ago. During her city council race, we watched in awe and pride as our daughter declined donations from parties and PACs, preferring to maintain the sanctity of one of the few nonpartisan positions left in this nation, endeavoring to represent every voice, every citizen, not merely the business community, which appears set on development at any cost to the citizens who are paying the freight and will suffer the losses. She has now come under siege. One of the men in this room referred to Carrie publicly as "a nice girl", for which we thank him. She is nice. She's no girl. I brought with me a copy of her CV outlining her education, her accomplishments, her background, and her suitability for this position and any other in city government, and I invite you to take a look. Carrie's opponent apparently admitted to her that she is, that this resolution has been presented because she objected to one of his plans. This is bullying at its worst on the local level. This evening is the culmination of an attempt to quell dissent and exterminate opposition, no more, no less. Carrie has been accused of being the reason Bastrop doesn't have a target, which is a lie. Her view, her vision for Bastrop is that it serve all Bastropians, not merely the old guard. And while she is in favor of thoughtful development that serves the community at large, she is opposed to unfettered development designed to enrich the few while providing low-level jobs and retail establishments for which the death knell has already sounded and which are declaring Chapter 11 at warp speed. I urge you to reject this shameless search-and-destroy mission crafted as nothing more than a public show of power to ward off those who dare to dissent. You want differing views and robust, informed debate and discussion as the present and future of this wonderful city is decided, not just for you, but for everyone. And to you two who have launched this attack against Carrie Kaler, puppet master, and marionette, shame on you. You have shown your hands. This is a horrible thing for you to do. Silencing opposition is what they do in China and Russia, not in Texas. I'll leave Ms. Kaler's CV for you to look at.
Mayor, I'll remind you of the rules of decorum. Mayor, I'll remind you of the rules of decorum of people name-calling.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Please refrain from any personal attacks on any members on the diocese, any member of staff. Thank you, ma'am. Next to speak, that has requested to speak is Ms. Deborah Moore. Please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and you will be given three minutes.
Thank you, sir. I am Debbie Moore, 1306 Church Street in Bastrop. In case you don't know, I'm the other person that they want to remove. But a lot can be said, and I'm sure will be said, about pro and con on this item, but I'm also sure that no matter what I say, you've made up your minds as to how you're going to vote. But I want you to think about a few things. I've heard, "Well, we've been trying to move things forward for a year, but y'all haven't moved things forward." The job of P&amp;Z is to consider what is brought to us. We don't make zoning. We bring, we make recommendations to the city council on items that are brought to us. If there hasn't been a vote on moving it forward or making some amendments because it hadn't been brought to us. At the end of the May P&amp;Z meeting, we were given a multi-page document that was not on the agenda entitled Introduction to Planned Development-Zoning. It was obvious the commission had questions, and since we had already scheduled a workshop for two weeks prior to tent, I suggested we hold our questions until then. At the workshop, a lot of questions were asked and answered. And at the end of the meeting, I was in favor of PDD, and I even said so at the town hall meeting, and Mr. Crouch thanked me for my comments. P&amp;Z has a meeting scheduled two days from here, and it will be the first time that we've had an opportunity to look at, dissect, and make a recommendation to this council. If we hadn't moved it along, it's because y'all haven't sent us anything. We've been waiting for something to vote on. And I'm sure, in closing, I'm sure that there were, it's just a coincidence that Mr. Plunkett's opponent on May 10 election, along with one of his opponent's earliest and most vocal supporters, are the two people he wishes to remove. Kind of smells like retaliation to me, and it disappoints me.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. David Beryl. Mr. Beryl wishes to speak in opposition to this. He's not here to voice his opposition. Maria Montoya Staden, or I'm sorry, yes, Staden. I got it right. Thank you. State your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Maria Montoya Staden, and I live at 1707 Pecan Street, Bastrop, Texas, 78602. And I would like to speak of the action item that we have before us. This issue has brought to mind our city's efforts to define or redefine what is authentically Bastrop. I've heard that as something that we have all been talking about. I hope that you agree that in an authentic Bastrop, our city council has worked collaboratively with the skills and talents of our citizen volunteers. It is understood that the commissions and committee work at the, that we all work at the behest of the council, and the council has deemed it necessary to include citizen input and citizen volunteers as part of its decision-making process. Anyone who has worked with volunteers knows the joys and challenges of working with them. In my former life as a school principal, as an associate superintendent of a large district, and more recently as the past organizer of the First Friday Art Walk, I have literally worked with thousands of volunteers. I have learned that volunteers need to be inspired by the cause they are serving. They need to have communication channels to go both ways, and they need to see how they can make a difference, all of that while accomplishing the city's goals. When difficulties arise, as they often do, it's best to clarify, define the roles, provide comprehensive training and support and feedback, both positive and constructive. As cumbersome as that may sound, it's easier than recruiting and replacing them with new citizen volunteers that will still require all that work. We've been here before. About four months ago, another citizen volunteer came before you. Perhaps it's time to pause and investigate whether this is a systemic issue instead of a personnel one. In Bastrop, we have citizens on commissions and committees that serve the city in a variety of capacities. They use their time, their skills, their talent in the service of their community. In Bastrop, we have citizens of different backgrounds, experiences, and opinions. We don't always agree, but we respect each other's talents and differences, and we use our words to reach agreements. When we join together, we make this beautiful tapestry that we call home. Voting to oust these two talented, hard-working volunteers so publicly, so unceremoniously, and so un-Bastrop will send a message and a chill to the citizen volunteers. Let's not use the extreme option when we have more measured approaches. I'm asking you to choose an authentically Bastrop way which represents who we are and who we want to be. Vote no on 12C.
Thank you, Ms. Staden. Next, we have, well, we have a pair. I don't know if one of, both of y'all are going to speak, but Denise Smith and Pete Langens. Did I mess up that last name? Tell me I did, and so I feel good about myself. Langen, is that who you're proud of?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. State your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes.
My name is Denise Smith.
I'm Peter Langens, and we're here to make a statement in opposition to the removal of Commissioners Kaler and Moore. We live at 208 East Kianaha Lulululane in Tahitian Village.
Last year, we were notified of the construction of an impending industrial park that abuts our rear property line. Concerned about the development, we came before the Planning and Zoning Commission to protest and see if there was any relief that could be offered to us. The commissioners worked with us, and Commissioner Kaler motioned to, sorry, to protest and see if there was any relief that could be offered to us. The commissioners worked with us, and Commissioner Kaler motioned to approve the project, but with the condition that there be a vegetative buffer left between the residential properties in the area of development to provide us a light and noise buffer and some relief for the wildlife that moves through off the natural nature preserve. Her recommendations, supported by her fellow commissioners, helped us and seems like a common sense solution. We were glad to have her and Chair Moore as our representatives and oppose their removal. We also oppose any effort to stifle constructive discussions about changes that impact our community. Thank you.
We really feel like we were listened to by Carrie Kaler, and she came up with a fair solution. We felt good about it.
More than we expected. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate you. Next, who is registered to request to speak is Ruth Todd. Todd, if you will approach the podium, give us your name and address, and you'll get three minutes. three minutes.
Hello, I'm Ruth Todd, and I live at 100 Water Course Way in Bastrop, Texas, 78602. I'm here to speak to you on the resolution 12C today to support Carrie Kayler and Debbie Moore. What I'm seeing is an attempt to silence two very intelligent women by two men on the city council. Several meetings back, the P&amp;Z received a packet of material at the end of a meeting about the PDD and the B3 code from the city manager Sylvia Caruia. Carrie Kayler voiced a concern about the packet being delivered at the end of the meeting. If questions and concerns are not asked, then why would the public trust those that would want to shut down and open dialogue, or trust the city council to do anything for the sake of the people of Bastrop? Carrie Kayler also ran against Kevin Plunkett, one of the men wanting to remove her from the P&amp;Z board. This smells of retaliation on the part of Mr. Plunkett. There may be a, I want to go into that one, sorry. There are three men on this council that normally vote together, and this really smells. And I'm sorry to Bastrop's new mayor, Lyle Nelson, to have to watch such pettiness happen at his first city council meeting. This is a power play led by the newly-elected mayor pro temp John Kirkland to show his dominance over the council. I'm unclear if the mayor has any power to veto or to send the resolution back for reconsideration, but if he doesn't, then the city charter needs to be overhauled. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Todd. Appreciate it. Dick Smith. He wishes to speak in opposition. Christine Long. She wishes to speak in opposition, and their comments are be part of the public record. Phil Hurley. Please state your name, address, and you'll be given three minutes.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. My name's Phil Hurley. I live at 1408 Wilson Street in Bastrop. I'm here because I'm very concerned, as a citizen, to see what appears to be a few of our city council members trying to publicly single out, punish, and remove two members of a voluntary board for voicing opinions that run counter to theirs. A true democracy has room for conflicting viewpoints. Examining and considering multiple points of view can lead to better choices for the many. Using one's power to silence the voices of those that don't agree with you is an abuse of power and has no place in our town.
Thank you, sir. Marie Blasek. Please state your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes.
My name's Marie Blasek. I live at 400 Oak Street in Bastrop, Texas, 78602. And I basically heard about this, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, and I was just so alarmed by the idea that two volunteers could just be summarily dismissed because they asked too many questions or because they weren't willing to proceed without more information. And that's kind of the, it just seems like a bit of a witch hunt to me, and I can't, I'll be very disappointed if the council goes through with this, because I think that volunteers deserve more respect, and these volunteers are highly qualified. And the way the city system seems to work, using volunteers and the boards and the committees to feed the council so that it can vote on certain issues seems like a good system, but there's something wrong here. I'm not sure what it is. I mostly came to find out more about why you decided that this was necessary, and I still don't understand why you think that, except that it's not moving fast enough for your particular, what, motivation. So I strongly encourage you to vote this resolution down and to support two women who've worked really hard for this community, Debbie Moore for a really long time and Carrie Kayler for a good while, so, and basically, thank you for all that you do. I know you work really hard, but do the right thing, okay? Let's put an end to this and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Next, we have Carrie Kayler. Please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Carrie Kayler. I live at 1408 Wilson Street, Bastrop, Texas. Gosh, I don't think I've heard my name said this many times in a long time. I thought I would start off by telling everybody a little bit about myself. I grew up off FM 969, which is the road that runs between Bastrop and Austin. I've been interested in development for most of my life because I have watched development creep eastward, and most of that development has been poorly planned and done with little consideration to the neighbors. My educational background is in political science, but my first job out of college was for working for an architect and metal artist also on 969. My background at the architecture firm and my education parlayed itself into a position at the city of Rollingwood, first as an assistant to the city administrator and city secretary, and then to the, as the director of development services. I did everything there from perform zoning inspections to drafting language for development code to issuing permits. I've worked with builders, engineers, developers, and day laborers. I built a department from scratch, as it had been previously outsourced to third-party contractors. I oversaw a drainage master plan because, like Bastrop, Rollingwood had significant flooding issues. Also, I served as their interim public works director while performing my other duties. The reason I'm telling you this is because my background is a resource to this community as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I don't have all the answers, and I certainly don't think that my opinion is one that matters more than anyone else's, but it does matter. I can't help thinking that if there is this much effort to remove me, that there is fear that I am challenging an agenda. I don't have an agenda. The only property I own in Bastrop is my home that I share with my husband. I have never been employed by Bastrop nor done any contract work here. The expertise that I bring, I offer solely because I care about my community. Like me or don't, agree with me or don't, but disagreement is healthy and discussions are necessary. We all deserve the gift of having our minds change from time to time through thoughtful dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kayler. I have a couple of public comments requests that have multiple items on there. Sheri Godwin, do you wish to speak on item 12C or 12D? Come on up. State your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes.
Hello, my name is Sheri Godwin. I lived at 115 Rainmaker Cove, and I moved there January 1st of this year. I quickly became involved in the local politics just because I am politically active, and so here we go already. It's only June. After hearing 12C was on the agenda, I had to ask myself the old who, what, and why questions. Everyone learns, you gather this information, so you can tell a story. Figure it out. So first, the what? The removal of two P&amp;Z committee members has been requested. We know the who. We learned that today, or I learned it today. But before we get to the why, first, let's look at the members you're asking to be removed just for a second. Longtime Planning and Zoning Commission Chair Debbie Moore. Hmm, she's been here for eight years? Eight years is a long time. Five of those as chair. And Ms. Kayler, she has so much experience and skills. Y'all don't give me time to list them all. So look into it, because that's amazing. So this leaves the last question, which is why. Now, the why is usually the hardest question to figure out, especially under the circumstances. Ms. Kayler had concerns about a planning item that was not on the agenda, concerns that felt more information and discussion may be in order before the board would make a long-term decision lasting well into the future and affect residents of Bastrop. Now, I for one am ecstatic that someone on the board was there to raise similar concerns I would have as a resident myself. I'm not on the committee, so I can't express those concerns, that's why I'm here today. And we haven't heard any evidence that these ladies violated any bylaws or misbehaved in any way, and Ms. Kayler didn't even receive notification that she was on the agenda to be removed. No notification. Wow. Okay. And then I found out who have also filed a resolution that would provide rules governing who can serve on the P&amp;Z commission. So what will be the result of removing these committee members? Who will benefit? Only the ones requested the removal know this reason why. But I find it all extremely what my kids would call sus. And if you don't know what sus means, it means suspicious in slang. This is very suspicious. I see no justification in the request to remove these two members, none, much less doing and voting yes for it to happen. I ask the city council to vote no on the removal of these experienced, hard-working, and dedicated committee employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Godwin. Dax Adian Haverlack. State your name and address, and tell me whether or not I pronounced your name correctly.
It was pronounced incorrectly. Dax Haverlack, 779 Peach Creek in Rosanke. So this is the entire chain. This is the 12C all the way to 12G. Firstly, Goodwin, Doug Goodwater, was mentioning there's been zero evidence. It's not like there was acceptance of bribes, there was no quid pro quo, there was no special types of relationships between those being asked to be removed from the board. There's been no evidence presented to it, so it's simply just a volunteer doing their responsibility, doing their job. There's, there's none. If you want to present cases, investigations, that would be cool, that would be evidence. If not, this is simply tyrannical, this is simply a power grab, this is simply recognizing a moment when a new mayor takes position to put in a shift somewhere in that board. So, like I said, resignation seat, many of the others that have spoken about it spoke to those points. Additionally, if we get, when we get into EFG, I'm pretty sure that the criteria for that commission, whatever that outline is, whether it's the, you have to have a masters in this, will likely be scheduled or like positioned not to more Debbie's or more Kaylers. It'll be one step above that. It'll say, oh, they only have masters. You need a doctor that's in this. Maybe that lines up with the current commissions, maybe they don't. I don't know, because I'm not going to go get into your resumes. So overall, I think it's a simple power grab to remove two more people from an already skeletoned crew to then fast-line any type of progress. And as I had spoken in other meetings, I am one of your liaisons and logistics persons who is the home builder for all homes of Austin to Houston right now. So if you want to fast-track a whole lot of fast development, these companies are not built for that. They, they need your 18 to, I don't know, 30-month delays, or you start clipping red tape, you start getting shoddy work done, you start getting very poor work done, because these companies are moving at a very fast rate without any considerations, any type of slowdown, which is what they're built to do. So that's not like a threat to the county or anything, but in other counties that have had simple majority votes for their planning commissions, they get bad work done because those developers can just say, oh, here's a little bit of money, let's start developing. And then they will develop horrible plans because there's no pushback, there's no consideration. It's just work getting done, which is profitable, but that's not sustainable. That's not what we're going to do in the modern generation. That's 1970s stuff. We're not 1970s. So nine seconds left, full opposition to this and suggest hiring or volunteering out some more people to fill that commission. That's what I would like. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Already called on David Beryl. He is, he's not here, but he's speaking, wanting to speak in opposition. I have a lot of repeats here, I'm sorry. Patrice Parsons. Please approach, state your name, your address, and you'll be given three minutes. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Patrice Parsons. I live at 231 Barron Creek Trail in Bastrop, Texas, 78602. And I would like to disclose that I am a Planning and Zoning Commissioner and serve with the two ladies in question this evening. I had notes that I was going to refer to, but having heard the concern and why it's being stated that these two wonderful ladies should be removed from the commission, I have some questions. It's my understanding that your concern is that we're not able to keep pace with what needs to happen in a timely manner. When I was there and present at the meeting, when it was brought up for the first time that we consider some changes in the May meeting, it's only June. So I'm not understanding why we are concerned about a timeline that looks like we're operating at a pretty fast pace. If the commission, or excuse me, if the council would like to give us a timeline that they would like to see us follow, I believe the commissioners, including Ms. Moore and Ms. Kayler, can honor that timeline. If the city staff has concerns about working with us and being able to meet those timelines, I would ask that they have a conversation with us about that, not bring it to the city council and say, "I've got a problem. I can't work with these people." I don't believe that that's the case. We're talking about two very competent, capable women who ask very serious and capable questions. They voice a lot of questions that those of us on the commission also have, and we usually can come up with a resolution that is, that the majority of the commissioners can approve. So I would like to oppose this proposition and ask that you change your minds.
Thank you, ma'am. Bear with me, we have a lot of comments on here. I want to make sure that we've gotten everybody, I've given everybody an opportunity to, to comment. Is there anybody out here that has signed up to speak on this specific item? Ms. Coffey, your comment was under Citizen Comments off this item specifically. Would you like to speak on this item or wait until a Citizen Comment? Come on. State your name and address, and be given three minutes.
I come to you as a former city-county employee from another state that managed a group of people that were poisoned by the city and county. Earning and maintaining the trust of citizens you represent is a privilege that should be valued. Those of us who are or were city-county employees work hard to have good relationships with citizens who choose to volunteer their time and talents on boards and commissions. Being cavalier with those citizens is a travesty and an insult. They may have sparkling personalities, or they may be a pain in the butt, but every one of them volunteers to do work that you need done and should be valued and honored. Unless a volunteer has gone off the rails and done something like robbed a bank or murdered someone, volunteers should not be kicked off the body they serve. They work free of charge, and they bring a variety of skills and abilities to the table. The minute you start getting rid of volunteer citizens indiscriminately, you put doubt in the minds of other citizens that they'll be gotten rid of if they say something you don't like, or you find your supply of citizens who volunteer to work for free to share their expertise and talent and knowledge begin to- expertise and talent and knowledge begin to dry up. It is hard enough now to find willing volunteers, don't make it harder. I appreciate volunteers and citizens who give their time and energy and point of view to become involved. It means we have a voice, even if we're not elected. Don't squash those voices. Those voices may say things you don't agree with, or that you don't even like, but they are the voices of the people you represent. The more voices who speak are like a mirror. It's called democracy and citizen involvement. As an elected official, you should celebrate and value those voices.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey. I have Robin Reich, who wishes to speak on three different items. She's not here. She opposes all three of those. Steve Chamberlain wishes to speak on this agenda item. Mr. Chamberlain?
He's about to leave. I'm sorry.
Oh, there you are. I'm sorry, that was several years ago. Thank you. Thank you. Steve Bridges wishes to speak on this item.
Actually, I didn't know if I was going to make it to our files to not speak, and I'll have to leave.
Be part of the, it'll be part of the record then. Thank you for your interest, we appreciate it.
I would like to say that I'm...
If you're going to talk, you can appear to the podium. We have you recorded as in opposition. Carrie Kahler has already spoken, oh, that's on 12D. Bear with me for a moment. That's all I can find specific of this item. We do have some people who want to speak in the public comment. Mr. Cooper, I saw your hand go up. Do you want to speak on this item or the public comment?
I'm writing, excuse me.
Please state your name and address, and we'll be given three minutes.
Thank you, City Council. My name's Mel Cooper, 603 Shiloh, Bastrop, Texas, 78602. And I wrote my notes while we were sitting back there. The council's been assigned a mission. The people who've been elected, a mission to overhaul planning and the planning and zoning. It's that simple. It's been a problem for years. That would imply that something is wrong, something needs to change. They're trying to make a change. I think we need to support the City Council on that. Talking about differences of opinion, differences of opinion are key. When people have differences of opinion, argue, stomp, holler, do whatever you need. At the end of the day, though, everyone has to get behind the vision, the mission, the plan, the direction, and pull for it. I don't know who has or hasn't. I'm not on the City Council, I don't have insight into that. But for whatever reason, they're wanting to make a change. The voters elected these people to make decisions, to guide the city, to fix planning and zoning. It's that simple. That's what they're trying to do. I support the City Council and the members and decisions they make as they strive to do what's best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Have I left anybody out that wishes to speak on this particular agenda item? We appreciate all the comments. Council, discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to comment.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and speaking. I say it all the time, I love hearing from citizens for or against an item because we don't know what you're thinking if you're just at home, watching it on TV or on social media, commenting. So I appreciate all of you coming out and being patient during our executive sessions while we talked through some agenda items this evening. I do want to offer my opinion regarding items 12C and 12D to remove Debbie Moore and Carrie Kahler from P&amp;Z. So I'm going to articulate this as best as I can, and I appreciate your patience while I read my dissertation. So Section 12.01 of the Planning and Zoning Commission reads, "There shall be established a Planning and Zoning Commission which shall consist of nine residents serving three-year terms. Any vacancy on the commission shall be filled by the council for the remainder of the unexpired term in question. Members of the commission shall serve without compensation and may be removed by the council at its sole discretion. The powers and duties of the Planning and Zoning Commission are: recommend a comprehensive plan for the physical development of the city, recommend to the council approval or disapproval of proposed changes in the zoning plan, have and perform such additional duties as may be prescribed by the ordinance. While council has the right to remove board members at its sole discretion from any board, I think that as council members and leaders for the city, we should do so in a manner that increases public confidence in our municipal government and the decisions we make, and ensure that it is done in a manner that is decent and in order, and with careful consideration and discussion to ensure the public that the decisions and actions we take are not done in a matter that is political and personal, but fair and consistent. Our ethics policy states we have a duty to ensure that when we administer and enforce the city charter and rules of procedure, it is done so in an ethical manner, both legally and morally. Our ordinances provide a framework within which to encourage ethical behaviors and enforce basic standards of conduct, while providing due process that protects the rights of the complainant and the accused, and not provide a mechanism to defame, harass, or abuse political opponents, or publicize personal grudges as stated in Section 3.14 of the Charter. Self-discernment is a powerful thing. It defines who we believe we are, how we believe our interactions with others should go, how we believe the world should operate, and our view of experience and conflicts through our own personal lens. We may feel entitled to our own truths, however eventually it will clash with the actual truth. Our personal truth should not impact how we take action, create resolutions, and make policy decisions for our residents. Those should be based on objective data, not our own personal beliefs and feelings, and not our political beliefs and feelings. Our decisions should be based on communication, compassion, and compromise in situations where we are able to do so, and I feel this is one of those situations. The best boards have often strongly felt disagreements, promote group thinking, and argue unpopular viewpoints, and differences of opinion are not valid reasons for removal." Which is what I feel, which is what I feel this is, to me and to many in this room. If a board member is disruptive, destructive, demoralizing, absent from duty, or their term limit has expired, 1,000% I agree. But to remove a member because they might share a different viewpoint, which is the perception of this action, while not illegal and not against policy and procedure, it gives the public perception of being personal. It could be perceived that Commissioner Kahler is being removed in retaliation because she ran against a sitting council member and two weeks after that election lost, now that council member has signed on to a resolution for her removal. It could be perceived that Commissioner Moore is being removed because she publicly supported Commissioner Kahler in that election. It could be perceived that the request for removal is in retaliation for questioning the direction and possible implementation of the planned development district in our code. Or maybe in the hearts and minds of these council members who presented this as a resolution, it's none of these, and they just feel it's time for them to be removed, offering a reason that makes sense to them because they can do so with or without just cause. We can, as council members, remove board members without just cause, yes, but to ensure that we are not doing it for personal and political reasons, I think we should, in cases that are not apparent or egregious, ensure we avoid the perception of personal and our political tax by clearly defining the offense that warrants cause for removal. The steps we took to discuss, what steps did we take to discuss any behavior or concerns that we had with these individuals prior to making this decision, and be able to demonstrate that the member was given an opportunity to correct the behavior. I don't feel we have done that. This was done recently regarding an occurrence with a sitting P&amp;Z member who admitted to willfully disregarding a recommendation made by the city manager. Upon discussing that matter, it was suggested that we tell her not to ever do it again as a warning, and it was suggested that we defer removal from the Planning and Zoning Commission and consider and impose a probation period, requiring the commissioner to recuse herself from certain discussions. We discussed it as a council body, we listened to each other, we had compassion on that member, and we found common ground. I don't feel Commissioner Kahler and Commissioner Moore were given that same compassion and consideration. They asked questions, and they voiced their opinion on subject matter presented to them, but isn't that their role? The primary function of the Planning and Zoning Commission is to study and listen to information that may have an impact on the community's growth and environment and make the best decision for the city based on the information they receive. They are to address issues related to land use, annexations, muds, subdivisions, new developments, zoning, and yes, serve at the will of council. However, in this case, part of the reason for their removal, in part, seems to be on an issue that council has not formally relayed to them. Council has not voted on the PDD or given them direction on implementation of PDD. For that matter, P&amp;Z has not voted and made a recommendation on PDD. At this point, they've only received information regarding PDD for discussion, questions, and debate. I believe that the will of council for them up to this point has meant to implement and enforce the B3 codes and make recommendations to overcome the challenges where it makes sense to them from direction from council. I feel they have been waiting on direction from staff in the form of more discussions and workshops to make changes discussed in council. I have seen them stand their ground on some items, and I have seen them push back on others. I do not feel that they are obstacles to the advancement of much, of the much-needed changes in our code. I believe through workshops and discussions, they can better understand the course and direction we need to find to correct and balance, and find a balance between the B3 code and any future, and the future of our codes. But give them the opportunity to do that. They should not be punished for doing what they deem to be their job as commissioners based on the direction they believe they have received up to this point. Furthermore, that message to me sends a message to other boards and commissioners. Think about the message that it sends to other boards and commissioners. Agree with what we want, or you can't serve. Creating an environment where our volunteers will feel they can't share their opinion in a safe space because it may result in a removal. Isn't the purpose of using residents as volunteers for these boards and commissions an opportunity for council members to give varying and diverse perspectives and opinions to make the right policy decisions? In 1964, labor arbitrator Carol Dotry introduced the Seven Tests of Just Cause, which is used as a standard to determine if the discipline or discharge of an employee can be upheld as just cause for disciplinary action. As a chief steward for six years with Communication Workers of America, I used this method faithfully in my arbitrations, even in cases when there was clear evidence that the employee violated code of conduct, as a means to ensure that management was taking the appropriate action in response to the violation. In determining disciplinary action, absent of self-evident misconduct or conduct egregious in nature, use of the Seven Steps of Just Cause to determine whether or not an action should be taken and at what level allows the enforcer to look at the incident in totality to see more broadly whether or not a policy violation has occurred to determine if the accused has exhibited a pattern that would warrant disciplinary action. And no answer to one or more of these questions is an indication that there is no just cause for the action taken. They are: what previous discussions have you had regarding the behavior to warrant this level of action? What is the rule or order reasonably related to the expectation of the offense to warrant this action? Investigation or due process? Was an investigation done prior to deciding on the action to determine if it was the intent of the accused to violate the rules of procedure? What evidence or proof has been presented to show the individual's purposely violated rules of procedure to warrant the action? Why do you feel this level of action is warranted? And was their history in service, was the history in service of the individual taken into consideration? Additionally, has the same action been applied to everyone evenly without discrimination? Again, and no answer to any of those warrants consideration of punishment. Additional factors to consider are progressive disciplinary actions and mitigating and extenuating circumstances. So in conclusion, our policy states the following: Board members shall be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by council for terms of three years. No board member shall serve more than two consecutive terms on a particular advisory board. An individual that has previously served two consecutive terms on a particular advisory board must wait one full year before being reappointed to the same advisory board. The mayor, however, upon a finding of good cause, has the authority to waive this one-year waiting period. That is our policy. By right, the action being taken is not illegal, and the process for removal has been followed per our city charter. Handling the matter in a matter that lacks diplomacy towards the individuals and the service and time they committed to our city, I feel, warrants an opportunity for them to correct unfavorable behavior they are charged with by members of this council body. I feel these individuals have not been given due process. I would like the council to consider allowing them to finish their term. I would like the council to set clear directives and objectives and goals for the Planning Commission, and give them all an opportunity to understand what those expectations are. And not doing that is a failure, in my opinion, for the allowance of due process. We, as a council body, should always strive to take the position of fairness in our decisions and make those decisions with a mindset of compromise and common ground. And I hope that in your votes today, you will remember that not one of us is perfect, and this dais is not free of mistakes in judgment and actions. Yet we are still here because of compassion, understanding, and the sake of cohesiveness and decorum as a governing body of this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Crouch?
Yes, I'm with Councilmember Lee as far as, thank you, everybody, for coming in and speaking on this topic. It's not a good one to speak about. It's not a good one to have, to deal with, but that's, that's why we're the elected officials. We have to deal with everything for the best interest of the city of Bastrop. This isn't about, there were several people that commented on the PDDs and that they thought that this was totally related to the Plan Development Districts that we are in the process of turning in and reviewing. It has nothing to do with that. So it has nothing to do with Ms. Moore's comments on the PDDs, Ms. Kahler's comments on the PDDs, absolutely nothing to do with that. It has a lot to do with our city financial obligation to pay for things, pay for our wastewater treatment plant, pay for our water wells, pay for our repave of the streets. We can't pay for anything unless we have sales tax and property tax revenue, unless we tax the people or raise taxes on the citizens. And it's part of our obligation to make sure that we're not overtaxing the people. And in part of doing that, we have to have development here. If we can't get development to come into town to help us, support us as Buc-E's, Academy, HEB, any of those developments do, that's how we pay for everything that we do. If we slow those, the progress down on developments similar to those, we're just costing ourselves money. There's, I'm going to use a project at Burleson Crossing East. That project, just to build it, took 27 variances to get through. Was it Ms. Moore's or Ms. Kahler's issue that the variances were required? No. We adopted, as a city, several years ago, a building code that's, that's not very efficient as far as commercial development whatsoever. They voted not, or they voted to have the variances come to council, and we voted in favor of approving them. That was two years ago. We could have, as a Planning and Zoning Commission, saw that as an example to make modifications or suggest changes to that process, and I think we failed as, as a city and as the commission both by not doing that. We didn't, we didn't correct ourself, we didn't correct our mistake. We didn't correct our mistake. Two years later, we're doing that now. We're in the process of creating these plan development districts and so that we can build specific projects like that. There was also the first national bank project that was downtown, the new drive-through area From Ms. Kaler's perspective, and this is coming from one of the Planning and Zoning meetings, that she said that it worked out well and that they did a really good, fair job. It's almost the complete opposite end of the spectrum from the client's perspective. The client said that they would never build in Bastrop again, that it was such a horrific process. So it's almost as different as what we're talking about right now with you supporting Carrie and Mrs. Moore and what we're trying to do. Nobody's seeing the middle piece here, and they're just seeing the opposite ends of the spectrum. There has to be a middle ground. And is there a good process for this all to happen? I don't know. I haven't been on council long enough. I'm not that experienced with this process. Do we want to have Ms. Kaler and Ms. Moore in a public setting like this? Absolutely not. But this is where it has to happen. So we want to continue to build Bastrop. We want to continue to take care of the residents here. We want to not overtax the residents. In order to do that, we have to have development. In order to have development, we have to have people on the Planning and Zoning Board and Commission to help with that process. We don't feel like, as chair and co-chair, that we're getting that process done as quickly or as efficiently or as we can, and so we want to make that change. That's our prerogative to do that. It's not a fun thing to do, but in order for the city to move forward, we feel like we need to do that. The same with city staff. There's been changes in our building department recently in the past several months for the same reason, same exact reason. If it's just the progress isn't happening, and if you're not doing your job in order to get this stuff done, then we just don't... We need to make modifications to it, and so that's what we're doing. I don't know how to explain it any better than that. I just wanted everybody to know that it wasn't because of the PDDs, as it was said several times ago. There is no timeline. As far as a timeline to get something done, yes, there's goals to have something done. There's a goal to get a revised code built, and it's just to do it as quickly as we can. The comment about disagreement is healthy. I agree with that 100%. You'll never get something, obviously, without two sides of a story and a way to move forward with anything. So there is two sides of this story. We just feel like the best path forward is with two new commissioners on the Planning and Zoning, and we don't feel like we can get the development done the way we can with the people that are in charge of it. So I've watched all the meetings of Planning and Zoning from 2010, I think, in the past week. So I know Commissioner Moore is... or Chair Moore has been involved with that commission since it started. She was one of the first people on there, and I respect her for that. If I'm misspeaking, because I see you shaking your head, I looked at some meeting minutes from 2010, and I saw that you were one of the first people on it, so that's why I mentioned that. And I've seen a lot of the people in here get up and speak at the Planning and Zoning meetings and show their support for these two ladies, and I appreciate that, and I agree. They've done a lot of great things, but we just don't feel like we can move forward with the development with those two in charge of the commission. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you, and thank you all for coming tonight. This is what a healthy town does, right? We come out, we talk, we disagree, but we come to conclusions that's going to work for the best of the whole town, and that's why I'm serving up here. And I appreciate you all, and I appreciate Debbie and Carrie. So I was on P and Z for six years before I sat up here just recently, so believe me, I know the process on P and Z, and I know what the role is on P and Z, and I know the flavor of P and Z upside down, inside out. And our goal, honestly, and I ran on this when I was elected, our goal is to make these codes right for the city of Bastrop. The B three codes must be amended and corrected. This was unanimously... I mean, everyone at the town hall meeting agreed on this. We hired a consultant that's made recommendations, so that was unanimous. So I don't think there's any... And I hope there's not. However, I would like to ask Ms. Kaler a question, if I could.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaler.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it has been evident at the town hall meeting and through responses and many calls from many citizens that we do need to amend and fix what is wrong with the B three codes, and you being a P and Z commissioner, do you support and are you in agreements that the B three codes must be amended or revised?
Absolutely. I think there has been code, specific code issues, and I think there have been specific process issues that unfortunately have led to people seeking to develop land having to wait a really long time, and that costs them money and is very unfortunate and burdensome for them. I do think that there are corrections to be made. As a Planning and Zoning Commission member, we've been asking for at least a year and a half for workshops with city council, for workshops with members of the planning department to look and compare, what did the old code say? What does the new code say? What worked with the old one? What works with the new one? For me, I've been very open about this. My goal is to see Bastrop to develop, but maybe develop a little more like Fredericksburg and a little less like Houston. And so unequivocally, I think that there are changes that need to be made. What I have asked for openly is to get granular with what those issues are.
Okay, that being said, Commissioner Parsons, thank you for your comments about having a timeline, because that's been mentioned. So if Planning and Zoning is given a timeline, because we are on a... We're 10 steps behind right now trying to get everything right for the city. Are you willing to work on a very expedited timeline to get everything amended, the codes right, work with the city to have this take place?
Certainly.
Thank you. I'd like to ask a question of Debbie Moore, please. So Debbie, it has been unanimous through the voice of the people at the town hall, and it's unanimous the suggestions that the survey has led from the consultant that the B three codes do need to be amended for the betterment of our city. Are you in agreement with that, and are you willing to work with the city to expedite this to do the best for the citizens?
I said at the town hall meeting that I could support PDD. We had been waiting for workshops. We've already... P and Z has already agreed to meet every two weeks. I don't think we can meet every week. I don't think we can work any faster than what we're given to vote on.
Thank you for that, but I'm not going to be specific on PDDs. I'm going to be general on the B three codes altogether. You see, there is a problem all the way around with many of the things that are in the B three codes, and they need to be amended.
They do need to be amended, but not thrown out until we have something to replace them. They won't cause the same problems.
And my next question is the same one I asked Ms. Kaler. If given a timeline, are you willing to work, and it sounds like you are, by meeting every two weeks in an expeditious manner so we can get this accomplished for the best of the town?
That's what we've been asked to do, and that's what we have agreed to do.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Councilmember Meyer. Councilmember Plunkett?
For the many of you in this room that have heard this story, I apologize, but I'm not going to tell it again. The reason I'm sitting in this seat is because of the horrific experience that I had during COVID, when I was trying to keep my restaurant open and keep people employed during a very uncertain time, when I had no idea when the next little bit of revenue was going to come in. I decided that I would double down and invest in the business, invest in my employees, keep them off unemployment, and improve the building and the safety of the building in the process. I didn't go before P and Z. It wasn't a P and Z issue. This was a planning and permitting issue. This was a process issue. The city, at every step, did everything they could to delay me as long as they could. I'm trying to keep people employed. I'm trying to keep people... I'm trying to stay in business, and nobody up here cared. It was disgusting. It was bad enough that somebody who does not like public speaking at all decided that I would run for city council. I asked the mayor, I asked the city manager at the time, please put me on a committee. This is after it's done. The damage is done for me. I don't want the next person to have to go through this. Please let me serve on a committee. Let me do anything to keep this from happening to the next person. I got crickets. All right? So when I did get onto council, and when I started running, I said to anybody who would listen, we have got to fix this B three code. It is a disaster. It's a mess. There's a reason we have had almost zero commercial development since we passed it. It's because you cannot develop commercially with the B three code. It just doesn't work. There are ridiculous requirements. On frontage roads to have the building within the front of the building, not just the building, the front of the building must be within 15 feet of the right-of-way. You want that on a 50 mile an hour street? The reason... And I said this a year ago, when we approved the 27 variances. I said this before the vote. We are not voting for this because this is a special property or because this is a special customer. We're voting for this because these variances represent unreasonable restrictions in the code, and they need to be fixed. So I asked P and Z to bring before us recommended changes so that these 27 variances will not need to be asked for again. The same thing I asked the mayor and the city manager when I got finished with my project, and make sure the next guy doesn't have to go through what I went through. Make sure the next person doesn't have to go what this guy had to go through. Nothing. I've gotten nothing from P and Z since then. So, you know, I come from a business background, so when an organization or a part of the organization doesn't do what you expect, and they're not doing what we need them to do, then you don't replace the people at the bottom. You don't replace the rank and file. You know, when the football team isn't winning, you don't replace the offensive lineman, you replace the head coach. You replace the leadership. That's why the two names that you see on the agenda are the ones that were chosen, and that's the only reason. And that's where we are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Plunkett. Any other comments? As the only non-voting member of this legislative body, I just want to say that our advisory boards perform a critical role by advising the policymaking body on important and complex issues. There are structured ways for individuals, citizens, to share their opinions, perspectives, and to formulate recommendations in a small, focused group format. Boards can represent the demographic profile of a community and provide a voice for many interests. They remain the primary process for involving residents in the democratic decision-making process. Democracy can only be realized when individuals come together across neighborhood and economic lines to assist in making community decisions that shape all of our lives. With that being said, I have a motion. I have a second. If there's no further discussion... Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
No.
Councilmember Meyer?
No.
Councilmember Crouch?
By three to two vote, the motion passes. We're going to move real quick, Colin. We're going to stay on 12... Or we're going to move to 12D, since we have some people here to speak on that agenda item also. 12D is to consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-19 of the City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, requiring members of the Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustment and Historic Landmark Commission to resign their seat when running for other elected offices. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'll say it's a shame that this came on the agenda on the heels of a political campaign for a Planning and Zoning Commission member. This was an issue I raised with the prior mayor pretty much week one, and that is because the development community was up in arms, and that normally, in my profession and in Ms. Kaler's profession, means there will be pressure and there will be political contributions. There will be political contributions to move the needle. Elections have consequences, dire consequences. This item is on the agenda to prevent those people who seek to run for office on these particular boards who will absolutely move a needle to need to resign their seats to run for elected office. And that's the only reason this item is on the agenda. It gives me, and continues to give me, great concern that there can be any kind of political contribution to a campaign, one way or the other, one way or the other, from private interests, to erode away what a community has built for one reason or another.
Okay, Council. The city manager's laid out the item. I will entertain a motion.
I have a question first.
I'll entertain a motion first.
The question is germane to a motion.
Mr. Attorney?
It's a question for the attorney.
Are you asking a procedural issue, Mayor, or are you wanting me to respond to Mayor Protim?
A procedural issue.
It's not carved in stone how we go about doing this. Normally, we have a motion and a second, then a discussion, if you follow proprietary rules of procedure.
Go ahead and pose your question.
Thank you. So, Mr. City Attorney, this item says that it impacts the Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustment and Historic Landmark Commission on the agenda. If I recall correctly, the... If I recall correctly, the text refers to those that are subject to the...
I missed that. Those boards and commissions subject to the ethics ordinance, which would include, in an amendment, the requirement for the Economic Development Corporation votes as well.
But not the Historic Landmark.
But not the Historic Landmark, yes.
Right. So that was kind of the nature of my question is, is this posted adequately?
Yes, it's posted adequately under the Texas Open Meetings Act. The subject matter is clearly on there. The proposed draft ordinance is in the agenda packet.
Right.
You're allowed to add or remove to it at the dais if you wish, and this is on first reading.
Okay, thank you. So then, based upon that, I motion for approval of item 12D, which is ordinance 2023-19.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Question for clarification. Is that a motion that removes historic landmark and adds EDC, or are you approving this item as written?
So, the text of the packet is written in a way that includes EDC and does not include the Historic Landmark Commission.
Got it. The ordinance that Mr. Borques provided.
That's correct. So, as is, I, I think simply the, the wording in the, in, in this item is, is incorrect.
So you wish, wish the item to read, removing the Historic Landmark Commission but add EDC?
Mayor, the text on the screen is incorrect. The ordinance is correct. That was prepared by Borques.
Right.
So, Councilmember Kirkland, simply correcting the text on the screen.
Good.
Right. But, but by motioning to approve the ordinance, the ordinance is already correct.
Excuse me. I need, I need clarification on that. So do I need to ask for an amendment to your move? I mean, could you state to me what it is that you are making a motion on?
Certainly, yes. So I am motioning that we approve the first reading of ordinance 2023-19.
Motion is to amend. Can I agree with that?
No.
No.
To approve.
To approve.
Right. And the particular item that's in the packet simply refers to the boards and commissions that are subject to the ethics ordinance. So I'm, I'm pointing out that the HLC is not subject to the ethics ordinance, but the EDC is. So this wording is slightly inaccurate, but the packet for, the ordinance is correct, so I'm moving to approve it.
Thank you very much for that explanation.
Yes.
So after some preliminary discussion, do I have a second to that motion? I second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Say again.
Yeah, but I was going to see if y'all had any further discussion.
They were on first.
Are you still? Yeah, I'm, you know, this is an interesting one for me because I've served for quite some time on the chamber board, and we had a resign to run policy on that. And the, the idea behind it was, you know, to not use, you know, to not be able to use your position on the board to influence, you know, the election. And, you know, in, in general, I think that's, that's a good thing. It's a, I know when I ran, I was on the EDC board, and I offered to the board at the time that I decided to run to resign, and, you know, the, the board didn't, you know, didn't think that was necessary and didn't think I should. So, given the situation at the time, I didn't. But, you know, I guess theoretically I'm for it, but I'm certainly willing to listen to arguments against the idea. And also, I would, can we further enumerate the, or I guess completely enumerate the boards that are subject to the ethics? Because I think that's a, it's a better way to put it than to name the boards in case another board gets created that, you know, would fall into that category. So I, I like the way it's written, but just curious to see how, maybe Mr. Bjorkes can answer how is determined whether a board does or does not fall under the ethics ordinance.
Certainly. The decision which boards, commissions, or committees to include under the Code of Ethics was a city council decision. When they adopted our new code in 2018, the council can add to that list of city officials or take away from it. When preparing this draft ordinance, it was suggested that it should apply only to those boards and commissions that are subject to the Code of Ethics. So that's the way it's written, the way it is. Right now, if the city council in the future adds or deletes from that list in Article 1.15, automatically this ordinance is updated. But if, for clarity or transparency, you would like to list specific boards or commissions in the ordinance itself, we can do that when it's brought back to you on second reading.
So Councilmember Plunkett, for definition, a city official in the Code of Ethics is described as a council member, the city manager, the city attorney, department directors, members of Planning and Zoning, Zoning Board of Adjustment, and Bastrop EDC.
Okay, so it's, it's a matter of being a city official more so than, and that's, that's fine if that's the case.
As defined, yes, in the ethics ordinance.
That's, okay. And so the idea behind, I guess, the other boards not being city officials is just that it's, it's just that it's not a, is it, is it, is it like the quasi judicial aspect of it? I'm, I'm just curious to understand the difference between the, you know, the, the reasoning behind, you know, some boards being on it and some boards not.
Sure. Councilman Plunkett, I, I was involved with drafting the ordinance in 2018. The city council had the choice. Do they apply the ethics code to everyone, all employees, all electeds, and all volunteers? Well, the decision was not to do it to all employees. Most employees are, were determined to be better subject to the city manager's jurisdiction. And, and as a, as a home rule city with a city manager, former government, it was decided that should be dealt with by city manager policy and not by the Code of Ethics. Only department heads and council appointees are lumped into there. Of course, the city council was subject to it. Then it became a question of which boards and commissions did the city council want to apply this extra level of scrutiny and codes of conduct to above and beyond what state law requires. And these are the boards and commissions that they chose. And so we created the term "city official" to find it in our ethics code to define who's subject to the Code of Ethics and who's not. And so when preparing this, it was suggested that this resign to run provision should only apply to those boards and commissions and not all the others, in part because some of these are statutory boards, in part in recognition to the importance they play in the process, the amount of scrutiny there on.
At all. It just doesn't work. Councilmember Lee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'm confused. So the Code of Ethics already has planning and zoning included in the resign to run language? Or that's what we're adding, right?
No. The Code of Ethics defines a city official as planning and zoning, Zoning Board of Adjustment. And so the way this ordinance reads is those city officials subject to the ethics ordinance would resign to run. That's the gist of it.
So I'm not in agreement with that. Why, why are planning and zoning volunteers, why are, why are volunteers being looked at as city officials? They're not city officials. They're volunteers serving on a commissioner board.
Well, one, this was an ordinance appealed to district court. So when we prepare a Zoning Board of Adjustment case, we prepare it as if we are going to go to court. Planning and zoning appeals to city council first, but often will end us in court over the same type of situation. And so the burden is heavier for those. EDC deals with an inordinate amount of money in private discussions for the most part. And so the resign to run, in my mind, is to prevent the undue influence of any outside party moving the needle one way or the other for boards that can often end us in grave danger monetarily in court.
So, I have a couple of things. So the amendment, if I'm reading it correctly, typed it correctly, the amendment says members of advisory boards. Okay, now I get it. Now that, now it makes sense. Members of advisory, because I was, at first I was like, this says advisory boards plural, but we're only picking three. So it says that are subject to the Code of Ethics. Got it. The other thing that kind of confused me, but I guess it didn't confuse me, I just questioned, is the Constitution, the Texas Constitution, doesn't mention anything about resign to run for boards. It has a very specific list of who that resigns the law, or rule to resign law impacts. There's then, of course, a caveat in Section 65 that includes council members with some exceptions to the rule. So that's there, but it doesn't mention anything about resign to run for boards and commissions in the Constitution. And then only five states actually have that resign to run law in place for elected officials as outlined in their, in the Constitution, in their Constitution. And then the U.S. Constitution doesn't require it at all, which is why Sheila Jackson Lee is still congressman and running for mayor in Houston. So I guess my question is, I mean, you're saying that there could be some influence, but I was on P&amp;Z and I ran for council. Cynthia, Kevin, I think Mayor Lyle probably was on a board before he became a council member. I don't understand the reason why it's coming up now. And to the attorney, if it's not in the Constitution, the Texas Constitution, we have the ability to not be in line with the Texas Constitution. I also looked at some case law where it was challenged, and the courts decided with the person that was being asked to resign to run because it's not in line with the Constitution. So does that open us up to any liabilities, or how does that work legally?
Certainly. Councilmember Lee, Mayor, councilmembers, we are required to have a Planning and Zoning Commission. We are required to have a Board of Adjustment. Those are statutory offices the state says we must have in order to have zoning. We have an Economic Development Corporation because the council put it before the voters to create that body. And so we, and the voters approved that, and so we have those. That being said, while I think we would have difficulty creating new resign to run rules for elected officials who hold public office, beyond that, which is already in the Constitution for Texas, I think you are allowed to create all sorts of rules, regulations, restrictions, qualifications on boards and commissions that you create. So no, just the fact that neither the Texas or U.S. Constitution mentions resign to run for volunteer advisory boards or commissions, that doesn't prohibit us from doing that ourselves. And there's no state statute in Texas that would prohibit us from having rules, regulations for boards or commissions that we create.
And there, no liability to argue the fact?
I'm not aware of any liability. The only case I know of regarding removing board members, which this is an effect, an automatic removal, is an appellate case that says that there is no right to hold an appointed office on a, on a city board or commission.
So?
There, the courts have ruled there is no right to hold a position on a city-appointed board or commission. That's different than an elected office, and sometimes that would be different than a position of employment.
I mean, I, I get the, the conflict of interest. I mean, we always want to make sure there's no, it doesn't put the city at risk, or there's no conflict of interest, or no, I just don't understand why, does something happen to make this all of a sudden become an issue? We all ran, and it wasn't an issue. Now we're, now we've all got in our seats, and though you can't do it now, we're taking it away, we're taking that right away. Nobody else can do it. I just, I kind of feel like it's unfair in a way to people that will be running after us because it's not an elected position, and Constitution doesn't say it's, it's part of the list. So why are we implementing it? And then, and then in reading it, I thought, well, why are we, I feel like there's times where we say, okay, well, the Constitution says this, so we, we need to change our policy because this is what the Constitution says. And then it's like, oh, no, we're going to change, we're going to change this. Constitution says differently, but we're going to make up our own rules. Sometimes I feel like we bounce back and forth between what we are going to enforce and what we can get away with changing, and I just don't, I kind of don't see the need, but I do see the need, if that makes sense.
No, it doesn't make sense to me. Pregnant or not pregnant, which are we?
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. We have some people who wish to speak on this agenda item, and the first one to speak on this agenda item is Carrie Kaler. Please approach the podium, provide us your name and address, and be given three minutes.
Thank you very much. Mayor Nelson, my name is Carrie Kaler. I live at 1408 Wilson Street, if you didn't remember. I just want to offer that if there is a resign to run, and I think there's been some really great discussion, I think it should be across boards if we're either going to have ethics or we're not. So if, if this is going to be applied, I think it should be applied to every city board. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Deborah Moore, who wishes to speak on this agenda item. Once again, I'll ask you to provide your name, address, and you'll be given three minutes.
I haven't moved since the last time I came up here, but I still live at 1306 Church Street in Bastrop. I must say, I agree with, with Councilmember Lee when I ask, why now? It almost seems like, I even agree with her about, why now? You've got your seat, so when you serve on a board or commission, you might have a little name recognition, so. Or you might have a passion for it, and it might give them, somebody pause to get off a board or commission to run for an elected position. But I have a different take on this. Our charter is due for review shortly. This is an item that I got a feeling that a lot of people will have an opinion on. I would like to see this, although you don't really listen to what I say too much anymore, put it on a, on track for an issue, an item to be listed with a charter review, and let the citizens of Bastrop tell you how they feel about this issue. So, like you say, none, none of you resigned from any boards you were on. I don't think Mr. Kirkland was serving on a board when he ran, but all of you have been on boards, and you didn't resign then, so I'm not sure why it needs to be done now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
There is a, an example of somebody who resigned to run was Prior Mayor Schrader, who was on Planning and Zoning and resigned her position to run for mayor. That sets the epitome of an example of ethical behavior.
And I resigned from council to run for county judge. So yeah, it's, there's precedents that are set. Thank you, ma'am. The last one scheduled to speak on this item is Judah Ross. He is in opposition to, to this item. Councilmember Meyer.
Just have a question, please, for our city manager. Isn't this more of an issue of being proactive to prevent anything from happening?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. I, I can't point to anybody's ethical behavior. I haven't seen anybody's political contribution sheets. I haven't asked for any of that information. It is an attempt to be proactive. I come from a prior city where on Planning and Zoning sat four title company presidents. Talk about being difficult to explain development. They either showed up at my meeting as a representative of the agency entity, or they showed up at my meeting as a city council member. So, been there, done that.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember, Mayor Protim Kirkland.
Mr., I almost said city engineer. City attorney, you had mentioned some recent experience with this in another city, that another municipality was having an issue with this and had spoken with you. with you about ways to correct it. Are you able to share any vague generalities about that?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. I, I do have other communities that our firm serves, and some of them have encountered a perception that once members of certain boards and commissions file to run for city council, maybe their demeanor changes, their interactions with the applicants change, they start looking at the campaign contributions and, and the rhetoric, and they've expressed a concern and a desire to either create some sort of resign to run, particularly if you've been on a certain period of time, or if you have not been on for a period of time. Perhaps you got onto a board or commission for the sole purpose of getting the name recognition and then using that to leap onto the ballot for office. It's up to each city to decide. The fact that the state provides resign to run for certain state and elected officials that have a certain term of office is one thing. Whether or not to apply that to local boards and commissions is a city council decision.
Does that help? I do have one request on this item where the last sentence of the reading states other elected office should be noted. These are not elected officials on the, on these various boards, and it should be all elected offices. I think that would be a fairly easy. The last line on 12D where it says, "Running for other elected office."
Yeah, so just remove other.
Says, "Should be all elected office."
Just remove other.
Or remove other, one or the other. And I think we can take care of that on the second reading. Am I correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, I don't think that language on the agenda is binding on the action you take tonight, but yes, we will clean up the agenda item before it comes back on second reading at a future meeting.
Thank you, sir. Alrighty, I have a, I have a motion and I have a second. I see no further discussion. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote. Motion passes. I'm going to move off of Planning and Zoning for a moment and move to another item. Colin, let's move to 12A. Hold a public hearing in Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District. Ongoing service plan and proposed assessment levy. Consider any objections to the proposed assessments and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-20 of the City Council, the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the fiscal year 2024 annual service plan update, including provisions related to assessments for the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, approving fiscal year 2024 assessment role for the district and containing other provisions related to Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation Providing for an Effective Date and move to include on the July 11, 2023 agenda for the second reading. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, we do have our consultant that has performed this annual review, John Snyder with P3 Works. So, I'm going to let him go over the assessment with you.
Mr. Snyder, good seeing you.
You as well. Mayor and Council, for the record, John Snyder with P3 Works, we're the city's PIT Administrator. This document is required to be updated every year. It's the Service and Assessment Plan. The city council had revised this document, did it amended and restated in 2019. There's really no changes in this update, other than just updating, going on to the next year. So, all the rates are remaining unchanged. We're just updating the assessment role, showing the new outstanding amount. The assessment for every parcel is listed on the assessment role, which is, it's, it's 10 pages long, from page eight to 18, and then, the budget for the operation and maintenance is in Exhibit B, which is on page 19. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, this is the city and the LGC complying with state law, so we don't get in trouble?
Yes, sir.
Outstanding. Any questions for Mr. Snyder? Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have some questions for understanding, because, about this whole process. So, the board meets with the Hunter's Crossing Local Government. Does the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation meet with the community, or just the board, to, when these assessments come up annually? Or is it just, these are the assessments, they get a letter saying what the assessments are? Is there input given? How does this work?
There's always an opportunity, and I'll, I'll let you speak. There's always an opportunity for people to speak on this, on this subject. They get a letter, there's notices sent out, the LGC meetings are open to the public, you're invited to come to provide input, and then, the letter goes out and an opportunity for, for public comment from that point in time. This has been an ongoing process since 2004. The process until 2019 had not been followed appropriately, and through the efforts of, of several people in the city and, and the attorney that was utilized for that, we straightened out the LGC, the PIT, so the assessments were consistent, they made sense, and they didn't overburden any of the residents in there. And also, it takes into consideration multifamily housing and the businesses in, that's located in the PIT.
So, is there a meeting scheduled in Hunter's Crossing? Come out if you'd like to comment on it, and people can come out and say what they like, what they don't like, or whatever. Is there any type of community meeting, or how, where is the meeting?
The community meeting is, is held here. It's a local government corporation. It's held here. People are invited to come here and provide comment. It's, it's advertised, the city manager.
Quarterly.
The city manager is the Chair of the LGC, Chair or President, Chair. She's in charge of the LGC, and there, it's made up of residents and business owners in Hunter's Crossing. It's not made up of outsiders. Well, Mr. Snyder's an outsider, but he's the expert on LGC, and he just manages it, the process for us, and he's required by law, too.
Councilman? Oh, I'm sorry.
We're definitely, we're definitely in compliance with the law, but yes, there's plenty of opportunity for people to make comment and provide input.
Councilmember Lee, I think, just to stake, take a step back on how we got here. A PIT is a Public Improvement District. That district includes improvements that have a public benefit. Lights, sidewalks, playgrounds, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I understand that.
They agree to the assessment amount. So, there is an amount that's stated. Everybody understands that. Those improvements, although, have ongoing maintenance. And so, there is, there's some dollars that need to be changed.
I understand that.
It, it is going to come to an end at some point, and it's going to drop dramatically. I don't know, Ms. Waldron, two years?
2031, I believe, is when it comes to an end for the residents.
I think my, my question that I, maybe I'm dismissing the answer is, when it's time to, to do the assessment levy, is there a notice to the people, the residents living in Hunter's Crossing, that this discussion is going to be had, and they have an opportunity to come to that meeting to hear and make comment on the discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
We also have an annual meeting. We had it about a month ago in the pavilion at Hunter's Crossing on a Saturday. You should have joined us. It was hot.
Probably why we didn't there.
We had a lot of folks show up. They mostly had questions about the HOA, which is different than this, but we did have a good amount of residents show up and ask about the assessments and improvements.
And do you, and do you have an estimate, or can you give me a roundabout of anyone that are in opposition when this happens? Are there a lot of people that come in opposition? Do you have a number of how many people opposed?
So, so the levy is, is, when they buy their house, the levy is on their property.
Right, but it's, the amount changes, right?
So, the only amount that can change is the maintenance and operation piece. The capital is set. It's set in the document. It's, it, that one, that part doesn't change. And when we redid the, the whole plan in 2019, 2018, 2019, they capped the capitals. So, the capital is set. Last year, we actually did increase the M&amp;O side because of the fence project, and we did an open house before we ever stepped out with that project, and we openly told residents that they would be looking at a particular increase in their M&amp;O in order to afford to replace and stay in all of those fences.
Ms. Waldron, please, please tell us what the M&amp;O is for each resident in Hunter's Crossing, or each residence. I believe it's $35 a year.
Yeah, it was.
It is 35, yes, sir.
So, I believe correctly. And the, and the, and the capital assessment is capped right now at 380, I believe, yes. So, it's $380 a year for the capital assessment, and then, it's $35 a year for the M&amp;O.
For residents.
Annually. That's annual.
Which is the 450.
Which, correct.
Right. Okay. I, I really just didn't really understand how it all works.
We send a letter out. We put in, we have, we have to do a public notice in the paper. This is our public hearing, so we are, will hold a public hearing, and people can come and comment. So, every owner of property in that Public Improvement District gets the letter that states that we're going through the annual assessment and that we will be holding this public hearing tonight.
Okay.
And all the residents are, are apprised that when they close on their house, that it is a PIT, and there's assessments, there, there are levied upon them. So, any other thing?
Thank you.
That comes on their tax bill, right?
It comes, it comes on their, yes.
It comes on their tax bill, but they have the opportunity to pay it in full at closing as well.
There's lots of options there. Okay, if you're through with your presentation?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do you have anybody which to speak on this agenda item?
No, ma'am.
Well, this is easy. I will close this public hearing, and I will consider a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. We have, any further discussion? Councilmember Plunkett? Oh. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Appreciate it. Have a safe drive back to Austin. All right, let's try to get some semblance of order to this real quick. Still some people here wish to speak on some of these agenda items. I'm going to move back to 12E. Colin, am I moving too fast? 12E, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-16 of the City Council, the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2 of the B3 Code, providing for a supermajority vote of the City Council to approve certain place-type zoning changes and move to include on the July 11, 2023 agenda for a second reading. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the B3 as adopted provides for required five affirmative votes from the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the City Council. The Texas Government Code, Chapter 211006, Procedures Governing Adoption of Zoning Regulations in District Boundaries, allows the municipality to adopt by ordinance a required supermajority of the City Council. I say this to the community at large because we are going to be facing several, several, several amendments to the B3 Code. And you may be, you may be of the slight that I am developer-friendly. I would, anybody who knows me will tell you I am community-friendly. I am resident-friendly. This is my attempt to put some protections into place for the residents, and that is, when there is overwhelming support at the Planning Commission level to deny a change, a proposed change, that a supermajority of the council be required to overturn that proposal. It is consistent with other cities I've worked in, and it has shown to work. It gives the council pause to overturn such a strong vocal show of support at the Planning Commission level. This is only for Planning Commission's recommended denial of an item.
Is everyone clear on that? I have one person registered to speak on this, Carrie Fossler. If you will approach the podium and provide us your name and address. We've forgotten it since you was last here, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Carrie Fossler. I live at 1903 Main Street, Bastrop, Texas, 78602. My concern is with inserting the word unanimous in there. Just in my experience of watching P&amp;Z, rarely are things unanimously denied. And so, I'm curious what that word actually does. So, I have two questions. And at the moment, does it, does a simple majority denial promote a three-fourth majority from council? Does a simple majority right now, a simple majority denial? I can't ask questions from up here, can I? Okay.
Sure. I'll, I'll direct my answer to the mayor and council.
Thank you.
This does not require a unanimous denial of all of the members, so it is unanimous from those that are present and voting. So, it's going to be a majority, but it's going to be all of those that are there, present and voting, whether it's the full P&amp;Z or a partial P&amp;Z.
Okay.
Can I address your question?
So, currently, I just want, I want to make sure it doesn't remove the, remove the need for a supermajority at council if it's only a simple majority denial, or if it's a supermajority denial, because those are more common than a unanimous denial. Like unanimous denials rarely happen, and we are inserting that word unanimous. So, I think the effect of it is actually narrowing the case when it would be called for a supermajority at council. I just want to make sure the unintended consequences of inserting that word isn't like.
That's the next agenda item.
Are we not on 12E right now?
So, we are. So, 12E is unanimous at Planning Commission, supermajority at council. Equal, equal. Unanimous, supermajority. The next item is simple majority at council of those, a simple majority at Planning Commission. So, if there's five people that make a quorum and three vote in favor, and it moves to City Council, then a simple majority of the City Council, three votes, is required. Simple, simple, super, super.
Simple, simple, and where is any, what does unanimous mean?
Unanimous is of the members present at Planning and Zoning.
Everybody.
It could be six people present, five people make a quorum.
Right.
So, if all five vote in the affirmative to deny something, then it requires a supermajority of the council.
I think the way it's written is confusing. If, if I type the amendment right, it says, "A unanimous vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission shall require a supermajority of the council." And then, there's another spot that says, and I think it's in the B3 Codes, "An affirmative vote of five members shall be necessary for the passage of any recommendation." So, I think it's just a, kind of, the wording might be a little bit confusing because unanimous seems like everybody. Unanimous means everybody on Planning and Zoning must vote for denial, for it to be a supermajority on council. Is there a way to maybe add unanimous vote of the members present into that language? Because really, to me, that's, it just needs to clear that up.
I'm looking at the attorney.
She's pointing to you.
Certainly, we can rewrite it if, if we, if that's the will of the council. Under default, Mayor and Council, where we are under state law, is by default, under the zoning statute, a, a majority of P&amp;Z can recommend denial, or a majority of P&amp;Z can recommend approval. And then, all it takes is a simple majority of council to approve something, regardless of whether P&amp;Z asks for denial or approval. So, a simple majority at P&amp;Z, a simple majority at City Council. That is the default under state law. However, state law gives you the opportunity to require a supermajority vote of the City Council to approve a proposed zoning change, even if a simple majority of P&amp;Z recommended denial. And that's what our current B3 Code says. So, what this proposed amendment pending before you does, it says, "All it takes for a City Council to approve a zoning change when P&amp;Z has recommended denying it is a simple majority." It defaults back to state law, unless every member of the P&amp;Z who shows up that night and votes recommends denial. If every member of P&amp;Z who shows up and votes that night recommends denial, this rule would require a supermajority of City Council to overrule that denial and approve the zoning change. So, I think the word unanimous is clear, but if you think there are concerns, we could change it and say, "All the members present and voting."
Thank you, sir. I, I think part of the, part of the confusion lies in the fact that some of the language in the amendment in there, what, what we have for item 12E, it came from page 60, I believe, to page 46 is what would be applicable to that.
In the text, yes.
And then, on 12F, it should be the page 46 that is referenced in 12E. That, that may have created some of the, some of the confusion.
Agreed.
So, I'm sorry.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes. So, I, I had exchanged...
So I, I had exchanged an email with Sylvia and then spoke with Alan about this today. There are two different things here. One is, it's kind of like the B three code in its formatting as a PDF file and then some red text added. And then there is a ordinance attachment A, which is a single page. And the one I had seen initially was just ordinance, sorry, just attachment A. And then when we got the packet, I saw the, the attachment of the B three code, and those two things kind of conflict with each other.
Yep.
And so what we had discussed today on the phone briefly was that we could just disregard the two pages of the B three code and we could approve it with just the ordinance with attachment A. Okay?
Does that make sense in, in what I said about the transposition of the, the two? I think what we're looking for here on twelve E is what is actually on page two ninety-four of our agenda, all action by the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be a majority vote of those members present, the passage of any recommendation to City Council. That should, that, that should be on twelve E.
No.
Yes?
No, twelve E is about the supermajority.
Mm-hmm.
So this, what's on page two eighty-two is the, is the correct one for twelve E.
Mayor, I think, I think what's confusing is the text of the B three, the redlined, underlined text in the B three is a text amendment to essentially show the council where it would go in the B three is in the wrong section. The city attorney quoted the specific place type, and what is in the B three code is a general about quorum and voting. So it's that, that text is in the wrong place and incorrect as the attachment. The ordinance that the city attorney prepared is the correct one.
Is correct, yes. I agree. All right, now that I've tried to confuse everybody, Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
So, motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Give it to Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the row.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you, Council. Let's just keep on this, this swing, let's go ahead and move to item twelve F, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number two oh two three dash one seven of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending chapter fourteen of the Code of Ordinances, chapter two of the B three code, providing for a simple majority vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission to make a recommendation to the City Council. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, I don't wanna say directly opposite to, but it's a companion, what I would call a companion bill. The way the ordinance reads right now in the B three code is it takes five votes, five affirmative votes to advance an item into, to City Council. So if a quorum makes five and we're now missing members of the City Council, then it should be a majority of the members present, assuming that a quorum is met, and then a simple majority at the City Council level. So simple, simple, the other was super, super.
Thank you, ma'am. Move to approve. I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a point of reference, when I read through it, the redline item is missing some wording, I don't know, I just wanna make sure that's caught before it's codified. The amendment says it would read, all actions by the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be a majority vote of those members present and in a quorum. The redline item did not say in a quorum. I don't know if that makes a difference, but, like, on page two ninety-four.
Well, you can't have a meeting if there's not a quorum, is what I'm saying, right?
But I think the wording should still be in the document.
Again, mayor and council, what I would suggest is the motion is about the actual draft ordinance in your packet, which would read all actions by Planning and Zoning Commission shall be by a majority vote of those members present, including the passage of any recommendation to the City Council. So there's no words added except for the word including.
So you're taking out, you suggest taking out the words in a quorum.
The, the in a quorum is not in the current B three code. I don't, I don't know where, where that comes from.
The amendment that was on our, in our packet?
Are you on page two ninety-four?
Page two ninety-four is where it's redlined.
I'm not sure what page you're on, my two ninety-four says of those members present, including the passage.
Okay, so there's...
Oh, oh, you're in the staff report.
There's two spots, yeah.
You're in the staff report. Sorry, my, my copy is in black. No, no, my copy is in black and white, so I'm like, I don't, I don't know what you're talking about in terms of red line.
So the red line then is the correct version?
What the city attorney prepared, yes, is the correct.
Thank you.
All good?
Yes.
No further discussion, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the row.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
By gosh, just go ahead and hit twelve G while we're at it. Twelve G, consider action to approve on first reading ordinance number two oh two three dash one eight of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending chapter fourteen of the Code of Ordinances, chapter two of the B three codes, providing for qualifications for Planning and Zoning Commission members. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes, ma'am. So the intent of this item is to put individuals who have qualifications in property development on our Planning and Zoning Commission. Now, not the entire commission, first of all, I don't think that you could seat a board with that many people that have that kind of experience, I don't think you'd find them all. And so I proposed three of the nine would have that experience. And then there's a list in the ordinance of, of what those positions could be. And, yeah, that's kinda it.
Thank you, sir. We have some people scheduled to speak on this subject. Carrie Kaler. State your name, address, you have three minutes, ma'am.
My name is Carrie Kaler, I live at fourteen oh eight Wilson Street, Bastrop, Texas. I find it amusing and ironic that the same member who authored a resolution for my removal is seeking to require qualifications from the board from which he seeks to remove me. To my knowledge, I am currently the only Planning and Zoning member that have these qualifications. Furthermore, I believe that this is ill conceived because it has the potential to create direct conflicts of interest whereby somebody will have to recuse themselves from the important work required of board members, or worse, where individuals will not recuse themselves for their own personal gain. There are few people with these types of backgrounds who have had the same, the privilege that I have had being employed solely outside the jurisdiction where they live. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person scheduled to speak on this agenda item is Herb Goldsmith. Mr. Goldsmith, you go approach the podium, provide us your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes?
Yep, Herb Goldsmith, one one, one one zero five Pecan Street, Bastrop, Texas. Unfortunately, right now, I feel like Don Quixote and I know at least three windmills in front of me. Let me just say this, I believe that this resolution is an overreach of the authority of the county, of the commi, of the council. Why? We all know your job is policy. And we know their job is operations. I see this as, as an operational resolution that basically says, this is who you have to pick. I think it is a large overreach. I think we've seen a lot of this tonight. However, I will tell you this, I have an answer for you, I have a proposed resolution for you. Planning and zoning members shall have a commitment to orderly growth and development and welfare of the city. Demonstrated experience and knowledge of land use and development planning will be considered for appointments to the commission. And let me take this a step further. Development planning means a strategic and participatory process to integrate economic, spatial, social, infrastructural, housing, institutional, fiscal, land reform, transport, environmental, water, and other strategies or plans with a view to the optimal allocation of scarce resources to the various sectors and geographic areas while supporting the whole of the population in a manner which promotes sustainable growth equity, including capacity building in poor and marginalized communities. That, to me, is a policy statement, which actually details what the commitment should be. And my feeling is, I trust the city manager, I trust the city manager to look at the applicants objectively and to take into account what their expertise is, and their expertise in their performance in other organizations. And I trust the city manager to partner with the mayor, you don't have to tell me who he is, but I trust him, they can talk, they can work it out, they can screen, with knowing that if people have certain expertise, that's a good thing. Will create an ethical issue, that's another thing. End the appointment in consideration. I just think this is micromanagement. And the other, other issue I wanna bring up is, we don't do this for any other boards, do we? Why this one? Do we want archaeologists on the historical commission? Wow. I think I know you really well, Mr. Strickland, and you're still a windmill. So, without getting turned away for saying things, I thank you for your service, I hope you take this into consideration, and I'll send you by an email with this text.
Thank you.
Talk to you later.
Thank you, sir. The last person to speak on this, I'm sorry, it's on agenda item J. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry, I, if I'm, I apologize, permission? Step around a little.
No problem.
State your name and address.
Again, I'm Patrice Parsons, I live at two three one Barron Creek Trail, Bastrop, Texas, seven eight six zero two. And I would like to disclose one more time that I also serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm very concerned that members of the council who are proposing that the P and Z have certain qualifications to serve on the commission are being very short sighted. I believe that to have real estate developers, architects, design professionals, landscape architects, design project managers, and construction superintendents are the very people who will have clients and/or even projects themselves that will come before P and Z. City staff should be the ones with the experience. City staff should bring recommendations to the commission, not the other way around. I'm hoping you will consider backing off this, I think that if you don't, it will continue to avoid unavailable, unavoidable ethic concerns and serious personal financial conflicts of interest. If you have concerns about ethics of people being on Planning and Zoning and then running for office, why would you not consider the fact that the folks you're recommending serve on Planning and, and Zoning would have serious conflicts of interest based on the types of folks that you are proposing serve? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons, I apologize, I had you down for, for citizen comments and I don't get agenda items, so I'm good, thank you so much. Thank you. Did I miss you again? Ms. Moore, please, please approach the podium, once again, provide us with your name and address and you'll have your three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Debbie Moore, still at thirteen oh six Church Street. I feel a number of the items on this agenda have been disingenuous. This item rises above all to the level of hypocrisy supreme. You suggest attorneys, planners, architects, developers, civil engineers, and others should compose a third of the P and Z members. I suggest that these are the disciplines that are more likely to have clients, just as Ms. Parsons said, so I won't repeat. We had a very distinguished architect who served on P and Z, whose, whose business was mainly in, his clients were in Austin. When he decided to, to turn more toward clients in Bastrop, he resigned before there could be a conflict of interest. I had a meeting recently with the city manager, at which time she told me, y'all don't have to worry about the details, and we have to be experts, you're the volunteers, we are the staff are the ones... Excuse me? We have the experts, we will bring our best recommendations to you. So to require certain disciplines to be on P and Z, I think it's quite disingenuous. And once again, I would recommend that this be an item that would be sent to the citizens as part of, of charter review, to let the citizens see how they feel about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have I left anybody else out on this agenda item? I will entertain a motion, please. Going once?
May I have?
Hey. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Brown? I am so sorry. Are you first, John, go ahead?
No, no, I, I, I'm reading the, the text again, because I, I definitely don't want to create a ethics violation situation, I mean, there is an expectation that individuals would recuse themselves. And I'm just wondering if we can, if there's a means to codify that, I mean, it is in our ethics ordinance already, right?
Correct, Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland, mayor and council, because Planning and Zoning is subject to the Code of Ethics.
Right.
Article one fifteen, there's already rules about recusing themselves when there's a conflict of interest and a prohibition against representing others before boards or commissions.
Okay. Okay, so that's settled. The, the primary reason that I brought this forward was to have more individuals in the room who have the different kinds of property development expertise to help the, the P and Z Commission with all the various decisions that they have to make. For instance, there are questions along the lines of, you know, what are the impacts or unintended consequences, and you can hear those things directly from the, the mouths of people that perhaps have done that before or have some firsthand experience with what the impact might be. And definitely not trying to create an ethical quandary at all, but, and I, it's not that I hadn't considered that, but I, I just wanted to be certain that, that that was fully covered and it, and it seems that it is. So, so thank you for bringing that up. So, based on this discussion, I move for the approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eighteen.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. So, I do have some discussion on this item. I too feel like it's a conflict of interest and I have a dissertation, another dissertation for this item, trying not to read it because I'm, I'm tired and I'm sure one else is tired, but I do wanna make sure I get my points across here, because if I'm correct, the, the, your ask is for at least three members, not the entire.
Correct.
Right? Fine. My, I do have an issue though with a conflict of interest. Well, let me ask two questions. How many pending applications do we have? And you may not know this very offhand, I'm not sure if the city secretary knows it offhand, but how many pending applications do we have of individuals currently wanting to serve on this board? One. And can we know if they are attorneys, architects, engineers? Don't know. So if we limit, if we're making it so strict that everyone has to be an attorney or an architect or an engineer, you know, real estate developer, it's not like we're getting 20 applications in for planning and zoning every month of people wanting to be on planning and zoning. So, one, we're restricting our pool. I don't disagree that the knowledge that they would bring is not good. I don't disagree with that. But, but, and this is where I'm probably going to start reading here, the Section 395.058 of the Local Government Code discusses the adoption by a political subdivision of a capital improvement advisory committee, which states, "The advisory committee is composed of not less than five members who shall be appointed by majority vote of the governing body of the political subdivision." It separates out the capital improvement advisory committee from a planning and zoning commission. The capital improvement advisory committee says not less than 40% of the membership of the advisory committee must be representatives of real estate development or building industries who are not employees or officials of a political subdivision or governmental entity. Planning and zoning is defined in the text in the Local Government Code as if, it says if the political subdivision has a planning and zoning commission, the commission may act as the advisory committee if the commission includes at least one representative of the real estate development or building industry who's not an employee or official or political, of a political subdivision or government entity. If no such representative is a member of the planning and zoning commission, the commission may still act as an advisory committee if at least one such representative is appointed by the political subdivision as an ad hoc voting member of the planning and zoning commission when it acts as an advisory committee. So...
Councilmember Lee, what section of the code are you reading?
I found that, I can tell you the page. It says, Section 395.058, Item B, Texas Local Government Code, statutes, capital, capital And I want to say I looked at the date to be sure it wasn't from 1920, and it says So, and if I'm wrong, please clarify, because this is me Google searching.
So, two things. So, two things. Chapter 395, 395 refers to a specific subcommittee related to capital improvements. It can maybe, possibly include some members of planning and zoning commission. We are governing is 211 and 212. That's where zoning commission is mentioned. There are no stipulations or requirements mentioned in 211 or 212 other than the governing body may, and we talked earlier about what our allowances are as a home rule municipality. So, the council may by ordinance adopt this kind of stuff. You see where you're talking about when we have an impact advisory committee that's made up of a good majority of the planning and zoning, plus or minus some people. So, it's sprinkled, but ours isn't in 395. Ours is in 211, 212. You want to jump in?
Certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Lee and city manager. Yeah, what you're reading is the section that describes the advisory committee, which is important for council, because we have items coming up this summer dealing with the adoption of an impact fee for transportation. We're required to have an advisory board to do that. This statute that Councilmember Lee is sharing with us says you have certain requirements, such as these certain professions related to the real estate and development community must be represented on that advisory committee. It goes on to say that our planning and zoning commission can serve as that advisory committee provided a certain number of our P&amp;Z members meet these qualifications, and they are real estate, real estate development, and building industry. So you see some similar language and some overlap there.
So, my question is...
And that's because, that's because, this is written because those people that are stated will have a direct impact to any programs, et cetera, et cetera, that we pass. There's, there's a direct correlation there. You want somebody who understands what the economic impact is going to be. So, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay. So, my, but when I read it, my question to myself was, because I don't feel like these titles should be part of planning, specific to planning and zoning. And so when I read that, I was like, well, that sounds to me more of what is being asked. I don't, can we, could we adopt a capital improvement advisory committee that works in conjunction with P&amp;Z that would have those titles? Because to me, you're already having these meetings with the ad hoc development group, right? Is there a way to make that a formal committee or group under council that you continue, and the city managers after you continue to have meetings with separately from planning and zoning? Because planning and zoning in every, and I'm not saying we should copy any, every city in Texas, but every city in Texas, their planning and zoning commission is made up of residents in the community. And one of the things our former mayor made sure of, and I'm sure our current mayor will as well, is that that commission is made up with, with a group of diverse people in the community so that different perspectives can be received. I have, I have an issue with most of, or I'm not even going to say most, because he's only asking for three, but three turns into four, and four turns into five, and then all of a sudden we have nine down the road, and then we're not getting different perspectives from the community from on planning and zoning. I think it's still important to remember that planning and zoning is only making recommendations. They are not establishing law. They are not establishing the rule of law. But in order for us to be able to make decisions that we ensure are not going to negatively impact other parts and areas of our community, it needs to be diverse. These people are volunteering. The other issue, I think, that what that comes to mind to me, is if you're getting professionals to have jobs that take them out of town, or they're, they can't come because they're in court, or they can't come because they're on a project, we might miss a quorum, because these people are architects, and they are civil engineers, and they might not be able to take off and come to a planning and zoning meeting at 5:30. So, I just feel like, one, it is a conflict of interest, and then we can only choose from people that live in the city. So if they're architects and civil engineers and developers in the city, and they have ongoing projects that are going to come before P&amp;Z, how many of them are going to have to recuse themselves and how often because their project is in Bastrop and they're coming for P&amp;Z? I just think we haven't resolved the conflict of interest issue, because there's going to be conflict of interest. It sets us up to possibly not have a quorum, and then we're going to be missing the fact that we're going to be missing certain, representation of certain sectors of the community. So, and, and if we could do some type of capital improvement, I'm calling it that because that's what I read online, but some type of committee like that, that would still include the people you were already talking to on the ad hoc committee in these conversations, and that information is brought to P&amp;Z, we're covered. So, I, I just don't think that it's a good idea for a multitude of reasons, but, I mean, and I can say they're all primary, but it's always been, not just here in Bastrop, but every, probably out of the, out of the 10, 10 out of 10 cities that I looked at, it's all, all, they, all the cities are taking them from residents in the community to give varying inputs to make sure that diversity occurs in decisions that we make on planning and zoning.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Crouch?
I wanted to make sure I understood, Councilmember Lee, on the ad hoc, were you asking for that ad hoc group to be part of that?
No. Thank you for clarifying. I'm saying we, maybe we should create an advisory board of that ad hoc committee under city council, as, just as we would have the cultural arts committee that does advising, or, you know, DEI does advising. They would be an advisory board made up of the people that Councilmember Kirkland, and, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Kirkland and Councilmember Plunkett are asking for, and then, but not on planning and zoning. I think you still need to keep those separate. And, and again, we don't have a whole bunch of people signing up to be on committees as it is. Where are you going to find these architects and engineers and to make that requirement on the planning and zoning commission, when you already have an ad hoc committee actively working with the city manager?
Yeah, the, from my perspective, the ad hoc group is a, is a, should be a very temporary group, just to identify items, and I don't think it's, it's designed to be a long-term, long-term item. So, just for the exact reasons that you were saying, that it's going to be hard to get people with those qualifications to be on, on the P&amp;Z board. They've all got real jobs to do, and most of the ad hoc group isn't even from Bastrop. I mean, there's a lot of them that are, the mechanical subcontractors and some of those people, but a lot of the people that are helping identify the issues in the code don't even live here. They live Austin or somewhere else. So it's, it's a great idea, and I, I think that's really one of the reasons why it's an item on the agenda today, is because if you can, if you can add people with that experience to the planning and zoning commission, then those people will in turn help explain some of the items. And maybe they could have identified some of the issues that we have with the code, with the B3 code now. Maybe that could have been identified if there's more people on there that have that experience. So that's, I think it would be a good, if we could do that, if there's a giant pool of people, which we have 10,000, but not everybody's knocking down our door to be on, on the boards or commissions. We do have three new people joining. We will have to do a better job of beating the bushes to get more people to volunteer their time and services. Maybe that's where we need to spend our, our effort, is to get more, more people involved with that. Just, we can use this whole thing as an example that we've been going through today, is that if, maybe if we had some more experience on that board, that we wouldn't have had the issues that we've had with the, with the B3 code that we adopted. So, that's just my, my take on it. I think that that experience could potentially help out. I think the ad hoc is a very temporary group, and city manager, correct me if I'm wrong with that, but I don't think that they were designed to be long-term.
No, they were not. And if we were ever able to get back to the city manager's report, I'm going to ask you for two names anyway, as we go through the code process changes, to have each of the council members nominate both a resident and a business that can form a subcommittee that is a sounding board for the implications of any proposed amendments that come forward before they see the light of day. Because if we're trying to bring something forward and it makes absolutely no sense, like Ms. Piper's fence, it, you know, I don't want to waste anybody's time. Time is valuable, it's important, so, but, that's...
I'm trying to get us there, Madam City Manager, trying to get us there. Trying to... Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, I think this, you know, having three, I think is, I think it helps with diversity, because it does give the, the board an opportunity to hear from, from people in the industry who can speak to, you know, the reality on the ground, because they've, you know, done it before, they've had to make it work. I would be willing to propose a friendly amendment to include language to assure that three of the members were not of that group, if that would help. Because I mean, that would, and then that would leave three wild cards in the middle, but, I don't know, if, if there's interest in that.
I don't understand that amendment.
Okay, so if we're going to have three members who are a member of the trades, let's just call it, so we can use one word, then we could also have, we could also have a requirement that three not be of those trades.
May I ask you?
Councilmember Meyer, are you done? Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Meyer?
So, just to make a note, under the intelligent consulting report that we received, this is one of the recommendations, is planning and zoning board members need some type of construction development experience or have training, which I would love to see all of it. I really think that it would be a great opportunity for everyone that's on planning and zoning commission, because we asked for a long time, workshops, training. So I would love to see planning and zoning have the opportunity, all of them, to have training in the future. But that is an item that was recommended. And also, I think that, Kevin, to your point, would you want to say at least three not be, or would you want to say six, because we have nine?
Well, I think it would be better if there were, if there were some room in the middle that could go either way. You know, I think when you, when you're, when you're trying to, if you try to micromanage that, if there's not some wiggle room, then it becomes really difficult to seat a board. So, you know, I, I don't know, I was just trying to help. So, I mean, it...
And the other question I have is, on our planning and zoning commission now, we, I know we have an architect, and she's sitting in the room tonight, but what other professions do we have that would qualify under this? Because we have one covered already.
I'm not sure without a few of them.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, we already have one, so two more doesn't seem to be that hard out of nine.
Carrie has planning.
Yeah.
And then...
Kristi has architect.
Kristi has architect. Before, I think Ishmael has water. No, that's not development, but he, he's been in that industry for a long time. And then we had Paul, or Paul, or Pablo, I don't know, I was trying to say Paul. Pablo was on P&amp;Z, and he's, he's an architect, right? I believe. So at one time, we had like three or four different people with the requirements. I don't, if you're done, are you done? Are you still?
Well, I, I think what I'm saying is, that's my point. I don't think it's going to, I don't think three's going to be that hard to find. I think that would be, I think that would only help and, and everything, and I don't think it's going to be as hard as, as we're thinking it's going to be that hard.
I don't know. I kind of feel like it might be, it might be, might not be, we don't know. They're not, we don't have them, they're not jumping at the, you know, to the front desk to fill out one now or online, and we've been dealing with development issues for a year. I haven't seen anyone else come up and apply to be on planning and zoning that are in those fields, one. And then, two, what if we don't get applications for those people? Then we're just going to stick with the six from the resident and be happy? Or, and I think that, again, our mayor is qualified to determine and make sure that we have a good mix of people. So I just don't understand the need to put the three on it. One, again, I think it's going to create a conflict of interest. Two, we don't have them all applying now for these roles. And then, three, we want to make sure we always have a quorum and a diverse group of people sitting up here that represents all of the community.
Thank you all for the discussion. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
No.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Motion passes four to one. We are moving on. I have so many notes over my agenda, unsure where I want to go at this point in time. I think I'm going to go to citizen comments. Go ahead and get all these pieces of paper out of the way, if you don't mind. The first one on citizen comment to speak is Nancy Wood. Ms. Wood, if you would provide us your name, your address, and you will get your three minutes.
And it's way past this retiree's bedtime. Nancy Wood, 906 Walnut Street. And I, my... Nancy Wood, 906 Walnut Street, and I, my comment has to do with, what I've seen tonight is a voting block, and it's my understanding from Mayor Protim, John Kirkland, that he has a six-year plan for the city of Bastrop and for the citizens. And so, what I would like to see on a city council agenda at some point soon is that six-year plan outlined, as a citizen and a taxpayer, I'd like to know what that is and how that's going to impact me, because clearly, this is where it's going. I'd like to see the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Next, we have Carrie Fossler. Ms. Fossler has indicated that she is good at this point in time. Colin, have I got you confused yet?
I'm confused.
Okay, but, but you're not working audio and video, Madam Secretary. The, all right, we're going to move to.
I have to sign up.
I, I, I do apologize. Step, step, step right on up.
That's all right, I don't mind speaking here.
Your name and address, and you got your three minutes.
My name is Patrice Parsons, and I live at 231 Barron Creek Trail, Bastrop, Texas. There are certain items on this agenda tonight that reminds me of the power grab that the state elected officials recently passed and will be put into law in September by the governor. I'm concerned that a lot of these decisions that have been made will have serious, long-term effects on this city and the community at large. I'd like to just mention a few that were passed during the session, just to liven up the conversation. They, they revoke cities' ability to protect workers by requiring water breaks on job sites, failing to approve funding for prison air conditioning, failing to address grid problems, failing to pass, or in one case vetoed by the governor, legislation that would have curtailed electricity demand and saved Texas citizens billions in energy Just like these policies, some policies that are, are being considered and passed tonight, I believe are going to have long-term detrimental effects on the city. One of the main points I would like to stress before I leave tonight is that I have brought up at the commission meeting several times, that before we take on any kind of serious changes to codes, that we pause and offer more town hall meetings to the citizens, since that's who we represent, so that they understand the decisions that are being made by the governing body, as to how these decisions will affect them and the community that they love. So, whatever timeline you put together for us, please include time for us to include citizen input at town hall meetings. Be sure everyone understands what's getting ready to happen to them. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and to speak to you, and appreciate your patience. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Just checking, have I forgotten anybody that has submitted a request to speak? Robert? No? The, I really appreciate the participation. Colin, let's go ahead and move back to page two. Mayor's report, I'm going to, I, I would not be doing a mayor's report with the exception of the fact there's a couple of important items. This Saturday is the Bastrop's first annual Big Bang celebration. You can find information on that. City manager may also have that, some information for us, but you'll find information at the city's website, visit Bastrop, the Chamber. You're not going to lose out on finding information if you go to look. I want to take this time to thank Mayor Connie Schroeder for her service and guidance over the past six years. To succeed Mayor Schroeder as Mayor of Bastrop certainly will be a challenge. Her example of leadership is to be admired. To succeed my friend Connie Schroeder is an honor. Colin, I think we have a collage that I would like to put up. We recently lost a fine Texas gentleman this past weekend. Bill Ennis was an, an integral part of our community. This University of Texas graduate, Stork Longhorn Alumni, was well known for his volunteerism that culminated in his election as Bastrop City Council in 2017. I first met him at the Chamber of Candidate Forum and was fortunate to serve on council with him for four years. During that time, he gave me a great perspective on the history, culture, and vibrancy of our city. More importantly, he became a great friend, along with so many other Will Miss, sorry, he was a good guy. All righty, next, for our council members' report, Councilmember Meyer.
Mayor, what if, if possible, because our citizens have been enduring a long meeting tonight, as we all have, that we could suspend and omit the council members' report tonight for all of us?
I'd love to do that.
A second, sir.
I was not going to let an opportunity to talk about Bill Ennis pass. I will move to the city manager's report then, because she has some important information to convey to us.
And I will be super, super, super quick. The mayor mentioned the, Colin, I don't have the clicker, the mayor mentioned the Big Bang, that information is up on the screen. We do have a sit with Sylvia coming up, we will post that information very quickly. Mayor and council, last night at the E D, I'm sorry, I don't know what date it is, Monday night at the EDC meeting, there will be a joint EDC and council meeting at a special called meeting for June the 24th at 3:00 PM. Various topics of conversation, some of which.
What do you mean, July 24th?
July, yes, July, July 24th. Sorry. July 24th at 3:00 PM, it is a Monday. Various topics of conversation, some of those project-specific, that may be an executive session, so we'll try to get the agenda out as soon as possible. Budget preparations continue. Out on the website is Balancing Act and Taxpayer Receipt. If you haven't played with the Balancing Act, please, it just takes into account the general fund. We've had a lot of important information about the community's response to wanting police, fire, parks, and some other important information. On July 28th, that is a Friday in July, we, the fourth Friday in July, we will close the Development Services Department. We will not close that Tuesday at noon for staff training. We will be attending a training in shirts that is provided by Denton and Navarro. Staff continues to train with me every single Wednesday from 8:00 to 12:00. We've moved beyond coloring, we've moved beyond platinoes, and we're into some of the deep dives of development. It's these kind of workshops and trainings that I hope to bring to the Planning Commission as well. The Planning Commission has agreed to meet twice a month. The first part of the month will be a workshop, and then the second part of the month will be action. So, it is going to be a fast pace, but I'm hopeful that we're, we're going to get there with good information. There is, I did ask you that I would request the name of a business and a resident from each one of you to create a subcommittee that would help me go through the code. I've heard from residents, and I've heard from developers, as we have sat through the development, the sessions of complaint is what I will call them. And as I shared with you in the town hall, there are so many unintended consequences of the B three, that I, I can't in good conscience imagine that the council and the Planning Commission knew completely what was going to happen as we adopted that code. So, it's important that we put real-world situations into code amendments. So, I do take what Commissioner Parsons said very seriously. The Plan Development District, that was a topic of conversation tonight, will be on the P and Z agenda Thursday, the 29th, and then it will be on the city council agenda in your first meeting in July. And that is what I have.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I appreciate council suspending their reports. We're going to move to a proclamation, because Ms. Moore's been sitting down there.
Ms. Moore, can you come up? Please, Moore is our city Parks and Recreation Director. I'm sorry, what?
Is it Parks and Recreation Director, or just Recreation Director?
Rick, I am the Recreation.
Manager, yes, ma'am. And the crowd you have up there, I notice you have Ms. Fossler.
Parks Board meetings, our, our members, and Curtis.
And Curtis. Whereas Parks and Recreation, integral part of the, the communities throughout this country, including the city of Bastrop, whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of our people who live near parks, and Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively, positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. Whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property taxes, expansion of the local tax base, and increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. Whereas Parks and Recreation is a fundamental, is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. Now, therefore, I, Law Nelson, Mayor of City of Bastrop, do hereby recognize the month of July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Bastrop. Let's give these fine people a hand.
This is a happy thing, come on, come on.
Everybody gather in. Act like we know each other.
Yeah.
We had more people, I'm just going to say.
Yeah.
We did.
We did. Thank you, thank you, sir.
Moving on, we have our work sessions and briefings, we'll receive a presentation proposal amendments to rules and procedures for the city council and boards and commissions by our city attorney, Mr. Mohorkez.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is, according to our rules of procedure, after each election, you're given an opportunity to review the rules of procedure and discuss any changes you would like to make. At this point, staff has none to recommend, but we wanted to bring it to your attention so we can discuss it. If you have questions, suggestions, something you want to send to us, we can review that and prepare that for a briefing at a future meeting. These are your procedural rules, how agendas prepared, how meetings are conducted, those sorts of things. We don't have formal rules of procedures like Robert's Rules of Order that we have to follow. You have adopted Rosenberg's rules, which are somewhat simpler as a guideline, but none of this is law. State law does not require you to adopt rules of procedure, but things like the Open Meetings Act does allow you to have some local procedural rules, such as citizens who want to speak have to sign up in advance, fill out a form, limit time to three minutes, those sorts of things.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Plunkett?
This is not a proposal, but it's a, I, I'd like to give it some thought, and particularly from you, Alan, and, and, and Ann probably as well, because what I'm thinking, I'm trying to think of, I've been trying to think of a way to increase the cohesiveness of council. And one way I thought, the, I guess my, my working theory right now, is to discuss the idea that, I mean, we, we all understand that four makes a quorum, and that you can't meet in a group that forms a quorum. You have to stay below a quorum in order to speak on any topic. So, what if, in order to, in order to, and again, we can't talk about this tonight, we're all wiped out, and I'm not doing a very good job of explaining it, so forgive me. Instead of seeking out to find the, you know, council, the two council members that you might be able to talk to about a topic, what if we somehow created a system by which, let's say, subject, by a subject matter probably, maybe with the, the focus areas as kind of our guide, that we have a rotating group of three that would, that would be your, those are kind of your partners, your subcommittee, so to speak, maybe, for that type of item? And I think that way, we could all get to know each other's views better, and, and have it rotate, so that each council member could meet with each other, you know, with every pair. See what I'm trying to say? Kind of like a rotating, in that way, the public knows who the, who your partners are on any given topic. It's, you know, it's, it's kind of my stab at transparency and, and, you know, having us, you know, mix it up a little bit.
Thank you, sir. I, it's, it sounds to me that we may be approaching a, an item that the state law may have a question on.
Well, certainly, we, we'd want to avoid any open meetings, you know, infractions with that, so I'll, I'll take that idea and visit with our city secretary and city manager and see if we can come up with any concepts to float to you in the future.
Thank you. It was just, like I say, I'm trying to mix it up a little. I like the creativity.
So, we're making suggestions right now for rules and procedures, is that we're done? Okay. So, thank you, Kevin, for thinking in that direction. I personally find, I, I personally take issue with the fact that four makes a quorum. That's your whole council body. If four council members are talking about subject matter, I'm sorry, three, three, right? Three, are talking about a, something that's going to be on the agenda, I mean, I think we're, you could say we're only, it's only three of us talking. At one time, it was only, when I first got on council, it was only two, then it became three, someone questioned whether or not it was four. Honest, quite honestly, I think that no more than two should be talking at a time. I also think that in building cohesiveness on council, it's out of respect if someone places an item on the agenda, you call, and you have questions or concerns, or you're not even really clear on what that agenda item is, call the person that put the agenda item on. What I see happening is, we're getting in our groups of three, having conversations, talking with the attorney, talking with the city manager, and then nobody actually talks to the person who put the item on the agenda. Our, our calls to get the perspective of another council member, I just see three people having the same conversations with each other and then coming to council. That's the appearance that it gives. So, if we're wanting to build cohesiveness, then instead of getting together with our same three individuals, I don't think we need something in writing that says, I can't call Councilmember Lee and get Councilmember Lee's perspective on it. I think it's just something we should be doing anyway, but what it has appeared is, same three people are having the same conversations, and this is what happens on council. So, I, I like your idea, I see where you're going with it, but really, I think it just boils down to having respect for each other. Councilmember Crouch has reached out to me many a times, we've had conversations that have ended up leading into something that he didn't even call about for our, I think every council member should be able to do that. And then, we want to make sure that if I have talked to three members already, I'm going to tell you, I can't talk to you, I can't talk to you, I've already talked to so-and-so. I've done that for Mayor Protim Kirkland, I've had that conversation with him, this is a quorum. So, I, I just feel like we need to start getting perspective of other council members if we really want to work together and build a cohesive council. That's the way to do it. I said all that, and then I forgot what my actual suggestion was. Oh, maybe it'll come back to me, or I'll, if I. Oh, maybe it'll come back to me, or I'll, if I remember, I'll write you, but I did have another suggestion, I can't remember what it was now.
I would ask you, if you think of your suggestions later on, you, you've, uh, you've sent them to, um, either the city secretary or city attorney, or even to the city manager, uh, for that. Thank y'all for the, for those comments. Mr. Mohorquez, can I move on? Thank you. Uh, now it's time to receive the, uh, unaudited monthly financial report for the period ended in May 31st, 2023. Ms. Waldron.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I can make this really simple for y'all. The information was in the packet. If you have any questions for me, everything was pretty straightforward. Um, the revenue has been very consistent. Um, there's two funds that are falling below forecast, impact fees and electric, and both of them are being, uh, monitored.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Waldron, please, please. Oh, so you got it.
One quick question. The fire variance due to overtime, was that due to fire dispatch? Um, were there a lot of fire dispatches that caused the overtime?
It was just an underestimate of what overtime would be. So, yeah.
No further questions. Thank you, Ms. Waldron. We appreciate you. Moving on to the, the consent agenda.
No, sir.
Nope, I'm sorry.
Nine B.
I stand corrected. Nine B, we receive a presentation completed by Intelligent Consultant LLC regarding the findings of the Development Services Department assessment. I apologize.
I will keep it super short, as I promised Councilmember Lee, uh, over the weekend. Uh, Colin, if you'll advance it, and I apologize for the very small text. Um, the, the assessment is based on, um, six core areas. The core business process, how do we access information, how do we process, et cetera. Um, what is our people interaction? This is where we have, uh, failed miserably, according to the survey. This is our customer service focus, this is our communication, how we're telling people they need to deal with us, our ability to communicate what the code requirements are, and the solutions required through the code. Uh, the regulatory framework, what is the code that's in place, what are the policies, how do folks follow those things? The technology, you've, you've heard it over and over again, MyGov, um, is probably the poorest software we could have selected, uh, in terms of what we need for development. We've talked a lot about physical space, there isn't enough space. We've brought all of the, um, outside contracts in-house, and so we're quickly running out of space, and we've, um, really got to develop, not just for the staff, it's conducive to a good working environment, but a place where, when an applicant comes in, when a resident comes in and they need help, there is a good, safe space to provide that applicant information where they feel welcome and understood. Um, and then lastly is the organizational structure. Who reports to who? And there have been, um, multiple changes in that department. We are, uh, still have a vacancy for a Development Services Director. As I've told many of you, I will not fill that position. My plan is to really build the team cohesion and get the team running optimally, so, uh, when the coach comes in, he doesn't ruin the team, as opposed to the team puts that coach in place. This one's even smaller. So, the, the high points, we needed to add staffing capacity, we've done that. There, uh, there will be 14 staff now in the Development Services, uh, Department. Um, evaluate options to blend the B3 code, discuss the B3 code, what do we need to keep, what don't we need to keep? Uh, part of the biggest complaint was the vernacular, the vocabulary used in the B3 code is, uh, not quote-unquote "normal." Um, we have lock coverage, we have first layer, second layer, those are different than building set back lines, build two lines, et cetera, that the general public is used to. Um, flattening the process. Uh, when I first came on board, that was my, uh, initial assessment that we had a process issue. We do have process issues. Pearl River is a prime example of a process issue. Um, but, uh, going deeper, we had multiple, multiple, multiple steps. We hear that from the development community, we hear that from our very own residents, who before, when they needed to apply for a fence, needed to submit a drainage plan, and just all kinds of things that make absolutely no sense in the course of how we deal with the people who want to come work here, or who live here. Um, minimizing the detailed, um, information. Go, you, you heard from the city attorney earlier what our, uh, reach is in executive session, there are some items that we are requiring in the development process that are far, uh, far too soon, and Burleson East is a prime example of this. He wasn't ready to come to you with 27 warrants. He wasn't ready. That's indicative of the current process we have today. The, um, the whole issue of what's actually required by the state versus what we require, and how can we flatten that, and how can it be smoother, and still get us to where we want to be, and that is protection of our valuable resources. Uh, there's a, uh, pursue a recommendation of MyGov enhancements. I know at the town hall, Councilmember Lee raised the issue and said, "How fast can you do it? How fast can you do it?" Process-wise, I'd like to fix most of the process before we jump onto a new software system, simply because garbage in, garbage out. And we'll, we'll get there, I'm, I promise we'll get there, but it's gonna take some input. And then, um, the focus on helping those novice customers. Uh, we, we didn't have a mechanism, um, for that, and that was, uh, primarily the reason a couple of staff members are no longer with us, is my question about, what do you do when somebody can't read, what do you do when somebody isn't computer literate, and what do you do when somebody doesn't speak English? How do we help those people in the department? And I got a shrug of the shoulders, and that is not what our residents expect. This is not the big developers, this is not Target, this is not Walmart, this is just the guy who comes in who wants to redo that garage, or that carport, to put his disabled mother and brother in that carport. We didn't have a good path forward for those kinds of people. Next one, low hanging fruit, that's everything we've already accomplished. Um, PDD is in progress, that's the very last bullet. Um, we've, we've done some pretty significant movement, it's moved the needle a little bit, there's a long way to go, and, uh, we're gonna just start eating that elephant one bite at a time. Next, Colin. This is a, a prime example of those unintended consequences. Um, Commissioner Parsons raised that earlier, we want to know what it is, how it's impacting us. This, to me, is the perfect example in the B3 code. The picture looks beautiful, but the resident down at the lower end of that picture, Ms. Piper, who was not allowed to redo her fence, and what the impact of what we were requiring her to do with that fence, is just simply not acceptable. Go through HLC re, review, apply for a certificate of appropriateness, then go to, um, planning and zoning, and if it would have failed there, then go to the city council, and all she was redoing was a fence that was blown down in a storm for like-for-like. I do not believe that's what the council intended with this code. Next. Proposed amendments, um, and this is the resident advisory group that I asked you for, one resident, one business from each of you. Um, in June, we are going to be discussing the Aradell District, um, that's already, Alan had issued a, um, that moratorium and, and the legal memo was issued, I believe it was in their 629 packet for this coming meeting. Um, in July, we will be discussing elimination or amendment of the grid street requirement. As we talk through streets and we talk through that grid system, does it really make sense from a maintenance perspective of what we are requiring of not only our commercial people to bear, but ultimately our residents to bear in the form of, uh, a tax or a fee on the bill to pay for streets? I want to focus on what we have, I want to be really good at what we have before we try to take on anymore. In August, we're gonna be talking about a reduction of the B3, the area boundary, where should it apply? Uh, where does it make sense to apply, if at all, and do all components of the B3 make sense? We'll be talking through that hopefully in the August. And then from that point forward, um, concurrently working through the development of a new code. You heard the other day, we don't want a Frankenstein code, but what is that code that really makes sense for us? It's certainly not Austin's code, not Leander's code, it's a code that makes sense for Bastrop. Any questions?
Any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Lee.
I have a question, I don't know if it's for you, because you weren't here, but what they, why did we even go into these codes? Like, um, I mean, we know the picture that was painted for all of us was great, but why did we leave the 2019 codes?
Ooh.
What prompted us to even be looking at new codes? Because everybody's saying, "Get rid of the B3, get rid of the B3," but we left the other for some reason, do we, do we know what that is?
So, um, and from a historical context of what I can read in all of your planning and zoning commission, and all of your city council meetings, um, we had a flood, we had some drainage issues that needed to be addressed, we took advantage of that time period to say, "Hey, the codes need to be addressed, i.e. the drainage criteria really should be addressed, and while we're at it, let's take a look at what really should work for our city." That's, that's my short and sweet synopsis of that.
Well, I just want to say that after reading this presentation, which literally took me two, three days, I could text her and I was like, "I'm still reading this portion," but, um, it's very thorough, lots of great information. Kudos to you for already having accomplished so much of what's being recommended, and, um, continuing to work with developers and bringing people to the table to have the conversation. I just think it was an excellent presentation with a lot of information that you're already unpacking. Most times, we do these, um, master plans and have these consultants come in, and here's the picture, and then year we're reviewing, and still the same picture, you're moving it, and I really appreciate what you've done since you've been here.
Well, you gave me four months to do it.
Thank you. Councilmember Crouch.
Yes, I, I just wanted to say that, um, the report is awesome. It, it's 70-plus pages of, uh, what they said wasn't wrong when I got on council, because they said, "When I first came on the council, we tried to identify problems, and they said, 'There's nothing wrong, don't look here.'" And, uh, it, it took a new city manager and a consultant to identify all the stuff that we already knew, now we have it in a great format, uh, to fix everything. And, uh, like Councilmember Lee said, uh, the city manager's done a great job of already fixing the low hanging fruit, getting all this stuff established. Uh, one, one of the questions that I think that we really need to look at is, um, uh, physical space for staff, uh, because that department's gonna continue to grow. I know that we're full, just from walking around this week here, and, uh, that's something I think the council's gonna have to look at, is a physical place to put everybody, um, and, and hopefully in one, one location, but it's, it's a, it's a great report. Um, I, I'm glad everything's been identified. Um, if, I, it, I'll talk to, to you, Sylvia, about, uh, sharing it with, uh, the development group, because that group's gonna want to know what all came out of the, uh, um, interviews they had with George, and I think George did an excellent job of, of putting everything together, and visiting with people and getting a perspective from everybody, because he got staff, citizens, every way you could reach out and touch somebody, that it was done. And I, I know we kind of seem like we got a lot of flack for not doing that, but that, that's real, uh, written out in this report, that we did a very good job of, of that with this report, so, uh, kudos to you, thank you very much, and, um, I had a whole lot to ask about it, but I'm not gonna do it, because we're late, I'm short on time, so, um, thank you for putting that together and, and getting George on board, thank you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate that.
Councilmember Crouch, as we talk about physical space, one of the seeds I'd like to plant, um, when Mayor Schrader was here, we had met with the county on the potential of a joint city-county partnership. We do have a 1445 agreement, we do work with the county, but wouldn't it be awesome to say, "Hup, let's talk to our friends across the hall"? Right now, what happens is, there is so much exponential growth outside our periphery that we're not aware of until something happens, and so I really want to begin to pursue an improved partnership and a potential co-location, however that looks, and whatever timeframe that looks like.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Meyer.
Just two things, uh, from the report, really quick. I really like the recommendation of making the terminology make sense, place types, character districts, that's, sounds ridiculous to me, so zoning terminology makes much more sense, so I love that. And also the term walkability is a favorite term that they pointed out, used by urban planners, but that's not really reflective of how our town is thinking and the way we want to go. So that term walkability, if I never saw that term again, it would be too fast, so those are my points.
So the ugly little secret about this code, and it's in the preamble, if you read the preamble, um, it talks about densities, and it talks about limited use of vehicles. And it's under the guise of multimodal transportation. We talked earlier about carts, about the limited ability of carts, and so while there is a place for that, and there is a time for that, we're not there yet. And so how we begin to implement that through our future transportation plan, a master sidewalk plan, a master connectivity plan, whatever that looks like, but today, for the sake of doing something, for the sake of doing something, it doesn't make any sense.
Thank you. Councilmember Crouch. Just fol, following the lights. Now we'll move to the consent agenda, uh, the following, uh, maybe act on in one motion. Madam Secretary.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 11A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the June 13th, 2023 regular meeting, June 15th, 2023 town hall meeting, June 20th, 2023 canvassing. Item 11B, consider action of the city council to award the contract to Vortex Lightning Systems LLC in resolution number R-2023-93 for Tahitian Village Manhole Rehabilitation Project in the sum not to exceed $150,000. Attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Item 11C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-11 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances Chapter 14 of the Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, Article 2.4, Administration, Section 2.4, Point 001C, 1 and 4, non-conforming uses and structures, D, hanging non-conforming use, 1A, J, B, and E, and providing for fundings of fact, repillar severability, codification, effective date, proper notice, and meeting. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Uh, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Madam Secretary, if you call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes. I apologize, council, for not asking if anybody wanted any of the consented items, uh, removed, and, uh, but I made it through it anyway. So now we're moving to item 12B. Uh, consider action to approve resolution R2023-94, the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the adoption of land use assumptions and capital improvements plan related to the roadway impact fee study that was presented and discussed at a public hearing held on Tuesday, June 13th, 2023. Mr. Jobe.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, just to be clear, we're not establishing any fees this evening. Um, what we, what we did in the last meeting, I wasn't here, but Mr. Jake Ginnhurst from Kimley Horn talked about the capital improvement plans and the land use assumptions associated with what will, the capital improvements that will, um, generate those, the cost of those impact fees, right? So, what, what you did at the last meeting was talk about the land use assumptions, you talked about the capital improvements. Tonight, we'll take action and say, "Yes, we agree with everything we heard." We will then come back and schedule a meeting here in the near future for a public hearing to talk about those fees, because they'll, they'll take this information based on your action tonight, turn around and develop an overall cost, and that's where you'll get that fee. So we're not ready for that conversation yet. Tonight, it's just basically a head nod and everybody agreeing, taking some action and saying, "We like what we saw at the last meeting." It's as simple as that. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Jobe? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mayor, just making sure with, um, ACM Jobe, they will have an opportunity to discuss any exemptions for perhaps affordable housing and/or city-sponsored projects, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, as part of future policy discussions, that's correct. But tonight is only saying we agree with the land use assumptions and the capital improvements.
Thank you for the clarification. Again, uh, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
I do believe we're moving to the last page of the agenda. I do believe we're moving to the last page of the agenda. Item 12H, consider action to approve resolution, resolution number R-2023-97 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorize the city manager to designate 30 parking spaces in the parking lot located at the corner of Willow Street and Farm Street at Fisherman's Park as parking for disabled patrons of the Big Bang event taking place on July 1, 2023, and providing an effective date. Ms. Moore?
Hi. So in case you haven't heard, we do have an event coming up Saturday. It is the Big Bang. It is very important that we maintain our public parks to the parks, to the public. So the park will be open to traffic and people coming in and out. It is important, though, that we do provide opportunities for our disabled residents to park on-site. So we are asking that we take the parking lot that's down in Fisherman's Park and designate that as disabled parking for the night. It is just a one-day, one-evening type situation. So we're just asking for permission to be able to do that.
Outstanding. Any questions for Ms. Moore? And I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve R-2023, was it, 97?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Moving on to 12I, consider action to approve resolution R-2023-98 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorize the city manager to sell certain real property located in the 2,000 block of Mill Street, building block 142, east of Water Street, and the 2,000 block of South Street, building block 143, east of Water Street. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, mayor and council. I appreciate the continued effort. I always save the best for last. I'm just going to go ahead and show you a picture. It's easier than talking about these building blocks. And you've seen this item actually twice before. What you have here is Highway 95 and Jackson Street. The city owns two lots here. We had some title work being done that took quite a while, and the underwriter was a little bit concerned with the language in our original resolution that it granted the city manager the authority to actually execute the closing documents. So this new resolution does that, and that's all we're here to do. We actually have a buyer. We have a contract. We're ready to close at the end of the month. All we need now is this resolution passed to sell these two 2.5-acre tracts. With that, I'll take any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Jobe? Everybody has a clear understanding on what this is all about? Councilmember Lee?
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Councilmember Crouch, is there any further discussion? Seeing no indication, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Moving to 12J, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-101 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a public improvement plan agreement with Blakey Owner Apartments LLC, a Delaware limited liability company for Pearl River, Phase 1, Lot 1, and 2, as attached in Exhibit A, authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, mayor and council. This is the public improvement plan agreement, and it's something you usually see on consent. We just thought this one warranted a little more discussion. What this does is issue a bond and fiscal surety that the public improvements will be built. This particular agreement also includes the tree mitigation associated with the first phase of this project. And what you see here is Phase 1, which is part of the multifamily. You will see Phase 2 as part of the multifamily. And then, of course, Phase 1 is some of the drainage related to what needs to happen at both phases. In this particular one, which is new to this document while we're having this conversation, is it secures the replacement cost for the trees that were removed during the land disturbance permit. So what they'll do is plant roughly about $48,600 worth of trees back, and then there'll be a remaining fee owed after Phase 1 is constructed to the city of $39,000, which we can then use that amount to plant trees wherever we like. So, and then as each phase comes in, we'll continue to do the exact same thing. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Mr. Crouch?
How much did you say the tree mitigation was?
The tree mitigation total for the entire 75 acres is $1,062,000.
Okay.
For this particular phase is about $87,600. They're going to plant 48,000 worth of trees back. Well, then, when that's complete, we'll get 39,000 remaining funds. That can be used anywhere on the city to plant trees.
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Crouch, we are in active discussions with Pearl River. We have a negotiated agreement that will be coming to the council. It talks about the need for a bond, a fiscal security, to be put in place for the trees that were taken down. Should this project not develop, that security will revert back to the city. Additionally, it places time constraints on the developments to occur within a certain period of time, 24 months specifically. At the end of 24 months, that turns into a dollar amount in the bank that can be drawn down by the developer. And again, if the project doesn't make, that reverts to the city into the tree, into the tree fund.
Right. And I would suggest, sorry, just to interrupt, I would suggest there's probably going to be about 40% of that overall fee, that one, that million dollars, I would say, that doesn't get planted back and be reverted to the city to plant anywhere we like.
So there's not a bond currently? That's, you're talking about something that's in the future, right?
It'll go ahead of the replant. So you'll see this agreement probably within the next two to three weeks, I would imagine. And then we will bring the replant for approval, but we'll make sure those two things are in, compliant first.
Nothing can go vertical without the bond in place.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because I know that we, I talked about a penalty for the way they strip that land. So that's, I'm glad that's in effect for that. And it's just going to be for Phase 1 only. So the whole rest of that, all the white on that map isn't going forward right now?
Correct. So today is, today is the public improvement plan for Phase 1. Phase 2, you'll see an additional contract that Ms. Correa just mentioned. And then Phase 3 will be the remaining, you know, Phase 3.2, 3.1, so on and so forth. Those will come in in pieces, and they'll also have a bond issued separate for that. That third phase amount is roughly $739,000.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Jobe? I'll take a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think Kevin beat you on that one. Any further discussion seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Jobe. You're staying up there. 12K, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-100 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a license agreement for encroachment onto Water Street right-of-way between the City of Bastrop and Howard's Design Limited LLC, as attached in Exhibit A, authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establish an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
As many of you are aware, there's been quite a bit of remodeling and repair going on on the corner of Water Street and Chestnut. That is part of a found art installation that's going to be done by the Howards. Now Pyrology, before that was the Foundry, deep in the art foundry. What they'd like to do is put on awning. This meets all the requirements of the zoning. And what you have before you tonight is an agreement to encroach into the right-of-way. And this is just a simple picture, how it looks from Chestnut, how it looks from Water. And we recommend approval of this resolution.
Mr. President?
Second.
Questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Y'all think we're through, but we still have one outstanding executive session item relative to ambulance service. It is 11:08, and we are in executive session. All right, we're done with the executive session. We're back in open session. No action is required. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We stand adjourned.